Welcome to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Today's date is June 8, and this meeting is hereby called to order. And at this time, I'll ask our clerk if you would please call the rule and establish quorum.
Good morning, Supervisors Kennedy?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
Serna?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, June 11 at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14.
I'd like to ask Supervisor Natoli, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Be glad to. Please rise. Head over hard. All right, Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's wonderful to see faces in board chambers again. It's been a busy week, a lot of moving pieces, and I hope everyone will be patient with us today as we work our way through our first day with public comment back in the chambers. Starting today, we're going to have public comment. I want to welcome everyone after 15 months of not seeing your physical expression and hearing you over the phone. It's really nice to have you here. And I also want to thank, and really a special thank you, to our clerk staff who have been working so hard to figure out, to make a plan on how we're going to manage public comment as we emerge out of COVID. We're not fully open yet, so we're doing our best to abide by the COVID, you know, social distancing and so forth. And we will be telling you a little bit more about how that'll work in just a moment. I don't want to be redundant, but I will try really hard as we're working our way through the public comments to give you an idea of where we're at. Just to give you a sneak preview, the clerk staff has arranged for us to have people in board chambers, and then there will be holding room, separate rooms, Rooms 1 and 2, and then a line outside in, I guess, in the lobby. And so people will, who come a little later, will take their place in line, and we will still maintain open phone lines for those who do, are not able to come downtown to make public comment. And we will keep the phone lines open during our public comment in chambers. We'll keep both of them open until we close public comment to make sure everyone's treated fairly. And I'm going to give everyone two minutes. I'll give you a 15-second notice that you have 15 seconds left, and so hopefully you'll be able to wrap up your comments. And I'm, I think, I'm assuming we're going to have a lot of public comment, but we may not, so we'll just see how it goes. So with that, let's get right down to business and read the, I'll read the announcement. "The Board of Supervisors encourages public participation during the meeting in person, telephonically, or in writing. In compliance with the directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, this meeting is broadcast live and open to in-person attendance pursuant to guidelines related to social distancing and minimizing person-to-person contact. Meeting procedures are subject to change based on recommended public health and safety guidelines. Please refer to the meeting agenda for current information. Public comments will be taken in the following order: in-person comments and then comments by phone. If you're making a public comment in person, please wear a face mask and sit in designated seat inside the chambers as we are continuing to practice social distancing and minimizing person-to-person contact. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. If there are no seats available inside the chambers, you may sit in overflow rooms. If a seat is available, standing inside the chambers or overflow rooms in lieu of sitting is not permitted due to limited capacity pursuant to social distancing. Please complete a speaker request form and give it to the clerk staff. When I open the public comments, I will call three names at a time. When you hear your name, please start walking towards the podium and wait until your turn to make your comment at the podium. If there is a need for an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act, medical reasons, or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance. If you're making a public comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in a queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda and/or watch the meeting to follow along and determine when is the best time to call to be placed in the queue to make your public comment. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is greatly appreciated. I will ask the clerk to transfer calls into the meeting according to, accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for the specific item. Members of the public are limited to making one public comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures and avoid being interrupted or disconnected when making more than one public comment on a single agenda item or off-agenda matter. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.net. Your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. Thank you again for your understanding and patience." And at this time, I'll ask the clerk for announcements, any announcements prior to moving forward.
Okay. Are you ready for me to start you off with your consent matters? That's Items 1 through 45. I do have a note that Item 2 will get pulled for discussion. The only other note that I have is for Item 24. You are adopting an ordinance adding Title 2 of the Sacramento County Code, establishing the Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board. You waived reading on this on May 18.
Okay, thank you, Flo. I apologize. My colleagues had some comments that they wanted to make, and I should have called them before I called you. So I'm so human, it hurts, but here we go. Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to say, first of all, I think I, just along with all of my colleagues, echo your comments that it's great to have people back in the, in the chambers. However, the requirement for mask-wearing has not been lifted and will not be until June 15. The law is the law, rules are rules, and it's disconcerting to look out in the audience and see so many people just completely, flagrantly ignoring the requirements that are the actual rules that the state put down and that our own public health official has, has, has put down. So, so I, so I really just have to voice my concern. I don't care if you're in the public chambers. I don't care if you're on a bus. I don't care if you're at the French Laundry. You're to wear a mask. And the fact that it's not, and the fact that it's not being followed is just-
Okay, um, excuse me, I'm going to ask the, those that are in the public, remember, we all have a Second Amendment right. Supervisor Kennedy is a, a public official that's been elected, and he, it's his right to speak at this time, and I'm, I want to just ask everyone who's watching and listening, I know these, these are challenging times, and we all have different opinions and beliefs about what American liberty means and about the conditions of the time, the political stage, if you will. And it's really, really important for us to exercise liberty. Liberty is not all, you know, everything go, anything goes, you have the freedom to do anything. Liberty is exercising your rights without trampling on others, and that's what America was founded on. And so I want to, I know there's a lot of strong feelings. If you have strong feelings, you know, go to the books and go, you know, go to where you need to go to, to better understand, you know, the facts, and then when you're advocating, advocate responsibly about that. And so at this time, I, I just want to make sure we don't let this meeting, this is our first day back, and I hope we can, I hope we can be respectful and in our discord, healthy discourse is respectful, without trampling on other people's rights. And so Supervisor Kennedy, would you please continue and finish your comments?
Thank you very much, Chair. I'm almost done. I just have to say again that this is the building that belongs to the public. That is true. But rules are still followed while you're in this building. The law is still followed while you're in this building. Just being in the public place does not give you the right to just flagrantly disregard what is the law of this state, what are the rules in this county, and that is being done, and I find it very disconcerting. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Natoli?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I was just, I wanted to speak to some items on, on the agenda as the clerk was reading, so I'll, I'll call a couple items out, but I, so.
So I think, does, is everyone clear on what the clerk read on the consent items, and are we ready to move forward with comments from board members? You read all the, all of your summary notes on, on consent?
Yes.
Supervisor Natoli, you have the floor.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 2 is going to be pulled for further discussion, so I'll hold comments on, on that. And I did just want to note that on Item 36, we did receive a public comment through the clerk's office, and I think it warrants some response, not necessarily here from the dais, but if someone could please provide some information to the, to the writer. So if you want to call the item.
Yes, sir. Item 36, Authorization to Execute an Agreement with Stable Productions to Allow for the Filming of a Television Documentary at the Sacramento County Sheriff's Correctional Facilities.
Okay. And, and I would just say that in light of a previous circumstance we had, I think we have a much better protocol. I mean, in my briefing yesterday as it relates to the involvement of our Public Information Officer and having some assurances relative to any script that would accompany any filming, documentation, and documentary that may come out of one of our correctional facilities, but I wanted to be sure that, that this correspondence that was submitted could be responded to, because I think there were some acronyms that were used that may apply for different reasons, and I'm not so sure, well, I'm sure that the reference here is, was not to, to the particular acronym that was cited. And, and I would just say too, that this program, I think there's a general awareness, if not a good awareness by members of this board, that we rescue horses from the Bureau of Land Management and then use that in a training program for skill sets for some of the folks who are incarcerated but are certainly awaiting release. And I know some folks have actually pursued careers in, you know, in different things related to, to horse training and so forth. And so I just wanted to be sure that the, that the correspondence was responded to. So, and could you, could you see to that, that it is, I don't have any particular questions regarding this. I think the assurance is that we needed, in light of what happened the last time, are in place, and I'm confident that this will be, you know, fairly representative of the program that we have and, you know, and shed light on an effort that saves horses but, but also allows folks that are incarcerated and receiving training before their release to maybe get some skill sets that allow them to take those outside when they do our release from custody. So those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. I was going to address the same matter. I think I have a little different take on it. While I appreciate the fact that, the way I understand from the board letter and the other materials, that this is going to feature, this, this request would feature a very positive story that I think we're, we on the board are very familiar with in terms of the, the horse training program out at RCCC. The one thing I didn't see in the request was having someone or an agency besides the Sheriff's Department also have eyes on the script and the materials before they're, before they're aired. And so I'd be very interested in having perhaps maybe someone appointed by our interim county executive be, be those eyes or, or have Ms. Edwards herself function in that capacity. I just feel like there's been too much left chance, quite frankly, with our past experience with the last, you know, activity of this sort that took place in our jails. And we on the board received a lot of feedback, not, not very positive feedback from that experience, and we didn't, there was no one besides the Sheriff's Department at that time to be responsible for, before content. So I think that this should have those, those extra eyes on, on the script and, you know, the parts of what might air before it gets aired. I don't know how we do that. I made a suggestion on how to do it, but I think without that, I can't support it.
If I could just be clear, because I understood that the PIO had, had reviewed the script as well as the questions that would be asked and some of the, some of the, I guess, general content that was, was least anticipated. I think that maybe to what Supervisor Serna said though, maybe a, a post-review before it would actually go, you know, go to airing so that our folks would have that chance too. I think that probably makes good sense. I don't know, we need to have a PIO there, present all the time that they're filming.
No, no, but I think there should be, in all fairness to, quite frankly, to the board, to have someone besides someone in the Sheriff's Department, including a PIO, you know, clearly have that opportunity to view what would otherwise go out for public consumption without anyone except that singular agency having the ability to, to see it first. So, because again, if there's something that, for whatever reason, does get aired that is unsatisfactory or unsavory to viewers, it'll be the Board of Supervisors as much as the Sheriff's Department that gets that feedback.
So I can confirm that the PIO in my office has reviewed the script and the questions and approved them, and we can work with Sheriff Jones around a possible review before airing.
Okay. Well, like I said, I, I need that assurance before I can vote affirmatively on that. Is that?
We will make that request, absolutely.
Okay.
Is that our jurisdiction, is that our jurisdiction with the sheriff?
We, we can ask.
Yeah.
But in light of the fact that-
I'm asking if that's within our jurisdiction to manage his films.
In light of the fact that we were allowed to review the script and the questions, I would not anticipate that there would be an objection to that. I don't know the answer to whether that's in our jurisdiction or not.
Well, the decision is obviously in our jurisdiction.
Yes, absolutely.
Because we're authorizing the execution of the contract.
Then you can authorize a contingent upon that.
Right. That's what I'm, that's what I'm suggesting.
Okay.
Is that what you're?
That's my motion.
Okay. And I'm, I'm agreeing that legally you can do that.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you, and you'll follow up with that, Ann? Okay.
I would just note in the, in the resolution that's attached, there's a, a minor typo. It says, "Including any," and this is first paragraph, "be it resolved, any necessary non-momentary, it's no, non-monetary changes, modifications, or amendments." But I would concur that we have the ability, since we're executing this, and we did it the last time, and I think we did get quite a bit of negative feedback, and I think rightfully so in some cases. And, and I think in this case, if we're going to enter into this, even though the sheriff may oversee the facilities, the actual resolution to authorize this activity is before this board, and properly so today, and I think in working in cooperation, certainly with the Sheriff's Office, but I do think it's appropriate that our, you know, we're not, we're not the censors of the material, but I do think, you know, again, if it follows the script and it adheres to what was anticipated, then I see no issue. But if it doesn't, then that's something I think, you know, it provides some opportunity for us to weigh in on that if that's, if that would be the case, and I trust it won't be, so.
And I just want to say, I, I'm asking as a question, not as, in an antagonistic way, just, it was a question that I wasn't sure about, so that sounds good. I appreciate it.
Can I just interject one thing? I would suggest, I understand your motion. I think that it would be achieved in a minor amendment to the contract that staff can do, basically reflecting your motion. So I would just let the record reflect that I think that should be in the agreement. So there's no question.
That's, that's the motion then.
Okay. I'd second it.
Okay. And we have one public comment on consent?
Yes. Right now, we have one public comment. It happens to be for this item, so-
Oh, maybe this would be a good time.
Since you guys are making motions, you might want to take the-
Sure.
-public comment. So I'm going to ask DAV to transfer the public comment from Item 36.
Take it, it's a phone public comment.
And I stand corrected, there's actually three public comments for that item, for Item 36. There are just some people that were waiting out of the queue that I didn't know.
Madam Chair, if I might, while we're waiting? Okay, nevermind. That's how I get it, that's how I get it to happen faster.
Hi caller, you have two minutes to make your comment. Hi, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Good morning, Board. I, to be honest, when I read Item 36, I was disturbed, along with many members of my community. This contract allows access to both jails, and this morning, I'm calling on behalf of people who were not able to, people who've been, who've experienced documentary filming inside the jails before, and those who would actually remain powerless in this situation. After the Jail Birds documentary, we've talked to numerous people who've confirmed the dramatization of this process, people who were asked about their cases pre-trial, as you know, the majority of people in the jail are pre-trial, and it's ruined many people's lives. County jails are not in it. Even this program, whether it's positive or not, it's, this is an example of something the board can do to prevent the exploitation of people who are currently inside the Sacramento County jails. And this documentary, especially in control of the Sheriff's Department, would be nothing more than propaganda, so I ask you all to reject this item today.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes. And if you could mute the meeting in the background before you start with your comments.
Yes. Hi, Board. Everybody here remembers what Jail Birds was like, right? And how horrible that, that series was? You know, it made, I'm sure it made the sheriff a good amount of money, especially free money, considering that he's already viewed the people that are housed inside his facilities as cheap labor to be used and abused and disposed, and disposed of as needed. But like, that really ruined people's lives. Nobody really shows like the aftermath that came from that, from that documentary series. And I think it's really upon you all as Board of Supervisors to really look into that, because if we're trying to do this again, that's, like, that is hella problematic. That's taxpayer dollars that are be using, that we're using to sanitize the sheriff's image in a facility that is currently under consent decree because of its horrific conditions under his management. So if they're, like, if this is a serious conversation that we're going, like, that this board is prepared to vote on, like, are taxpayers on the hook for this? Do the prisoner, do the people inside the RCCC know how their images are going to be depicted? Are they informed about that? Do they consent to that? I think those are key questions that you should ask, as well as where the proceeds are going to be going to. Because if this is like any other, under any contract that's going to either the sheriff or his department to, like, for, to be used however he wants it to, I think there needs, like, it needs to be clear that any proceeds that come from this documentary that are supposed, that are being used to highlight the program be used to improve the facilities for the people that live, that actually live in there. Like, like, that's a bare minimum, if you even agree to this.
You have 15 seconds.
So really think long and hard about this, and remember that the people inside are human beings just like you and me, and they deserve a voice and consent in the weather and how their images are used, especially when it-
Can you please wrap up?
...goes behind their, their holder, their oppressor. Sheriff Jones, pass.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good morning. This is Courtney Hanson with the Carcerate Sacramento. I'll be brief. I know it's a overwhelming week, probably for all of us, but just want to echo some of the really serious concerns. I've also been in touch with people who were part of the Jail Birds series, and I watched the whole thing, just because I felt like it was important to see what was produced, and it was honestly deeply disturbing. It was really hard to watch, and I think we just need to be really realistic about the sort of impossibility of informed consent in a situation like a jail setting, that is just brought with so many power dynamics. Like, for instance, of course, someone, if they're on lockdown all day, wants to get out of their cell to potentially be part of the video and maybe doesn't know how it's going to turn out. With Jail Birds, people were giving details of their cases without even having consulted their attorneys and while still being in a pre-trial phase where we should be preserving the presumption of innocent as much as possible. And I guess I'm just a little frustrated, like, is this sort of marketing tool really a priority right now? I'm excited to talk to you all about the Public Safety and Justice Agency and the plans to really focus on reducing the jail population, and I just don't know, in light of how sort of poorly Jail Birds unfolded, if we should really be doing another project like this, especially right now, especially going into our budget conversations tomorrow. So just want to appreciate some of those concerns coming from supervisors, and just want to sort of double down on those and hope that you take them very seriously. I don't think we should be doing a project such as this right now at all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And that concludes your public comments. And also, for the record, we do not have any more public comments for consent matters 1 through 44, and so I would like to close the phone public comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. Are we going to vote on this before consent, or vote on consent and then call this and then call Item 2?
I think you should take a separate vote for Item 36. It'll provide for a cleaner record.
Okay. And Supervisor Natoli?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. So maybe I turn to county counsel. I just was, again, looking at the Exhibit A here, kind of goes to some of the comments that Supervisor Serna was making, and Serna I'm supportive of as it relates to having the Public Information Officer. But there's a description here, and it's attached, obviously, to the board resolution, and talks about the agreement to provide the rough cut of the scenes of the program to a designated party, a designated officer. And I guess, I think in light of our conversation, I don't take that to be just a designated officer of the Sheriff's Department, but that our PIO. And so as you're looking at some minor amendments, Ms. Travis, I would like to be sure that that, because it allows 10 business days for review, and it talks about not compromising or jeopardizing the safety and security of county personnel or inmates or detainees. And I think it's important in light of, and again, I don't know what consent has to be provided by those who are in custody, if there's any requirement at all, but I think to the points made by some of the speakers, and again, with some sensitivity to what previously occurred with the Jail Birds, I think it would be really important as a part of this, since we're approving, you know, this attachment, the scope of service, and attached to that, just by way of information for those that may have had this brought to their attention via this discussion, there is a, an attachment that also talks about who they intend to interview, and it includes contractors, adoptees, offenders- offenders. I trust those are folks that are in custody. But it talks about prison staff, volunteer sheriffs, sheriff management, lieutenants and sergeants, Bureau of Land Management representatives, trainers, and obviously, the Wild Horse Program staff. And I do think that if there are any other concerns, we got to, this is the time, as it relates to this contract, because once it leaves today, assuming we approve it, then the folks are going to go forward. So at least I just, I turn to you. Is there anything else? I mean, I trust your office has reviewed this, and, but I think with the sensitivity, obviously, that had been brought forward by the speakers, certainly that a couple of us up here have also talked to. Again, I'm prepared to support with some caveats here. Again, I think you can do, you know, there can be some positivity potentially coming out of this. But I, again, I don't want to see a repeat of what happened previously. And I want to be sure that folks' consent is taken into account as well.
Yes. Our office has reviewed, and I think a lot of these provisions are obviously as a result of the prior Jail Birds film and more consultation with the County Exec's Office and our office. We can certainly add, or attempt to add, obviously, the producer has the right to reject those. But based on the conversation today, I think we have some direction about what the Board is looking for should this motion pass. We can look into the informed consent issue that you bring up, and also ensuring that, when they say county's designated officer, that includes someone from the County Executive's Office.
Okay. In those lines, it talks about making sure material's available pre-broadcast or dissemination. I would also note that it's pretty clear, unless there's been some change, that there is no compensation received for this. So there is no, you know, basically, we're providing under conditions that are outlined in this resolution, entry into the correctional facilities, but that there is no compensation to the county or to the Sheriff's Department, no exchange, as I understand it. And that there's also, quote, from the staff report, no net cost to the county. And that's, and I think that needs to be very, very clear, that we're not bearing the cost, but there's no compensation coming for this. And so, and if that's embedded somewhere into the, to the contract, Ms. Travis, then that needs to be crystal clear.
My understanding is that there's not. I would, I'd look to Britt, if he's here, or Anne, to confirm that.
That is my understanding, but I would want to go take a look at it to make sure.
All right. Needs to be really clear. Because that's what's in the cover staff report. I don't see anything about compensation in here, as it relates to, but I think, again, that needs to be very clear, and that there's no cost to the county.
Correct.
All right. Thanks. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair. On this particular subject, I want to thank Supervisor Serna for bringing up these points, as well as the callers. I think they're all good points. And as much as I am a supporter of the program, I think, most of you know my equestrian background, I think it's a great program. I don't think this is appropriate, and I think that there's too many downsides to it. I don't think it's necessary. And so I will be voting no on this. I also wanted to state that, with all due respect, and I apologize if I raised my voice earlier, but I feel passionately that we, as leaders in this community, have to follow our own rules. So after the consent calendar, I will be removing myself to go upstairs and continue the meeting telephonically, however long that would take your staff to help me get connected. That would be fantastic.
If we could take just maybe a very short recess, so that my staff and DTech, we could help to get him back into the meeting?
I'll be joining Supervisor Kennedy as well.
Okay. Did you want to vote on this item, gentlemen first, or did you want to?
I said after consent.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. So we'll go ahead and vote on item 36, and then we will return to vote on consent. And I had some announcements that went with consent, but I'll wait until just before we vote on that. So we have a motion to approve it with conditions: Board of Supervisors review, 10-day advanced notice for review, informed consent, designated county officer involved. Did I miss anything, Supervisor Serna?
No, I think the deference is going to be to County Council to advise about how best to memorialize that in the contract.
And I would just say that in the event that those are major modifications, if you need to, you know, read agenda, that we're going to be back in session next week, I think we can take the motion today. But that if, that gets to the point where it needs to be, it's beyond just a
So your motion is to continue it?
No, no, no. The motion is to, I think Supervisor Serna, it was the motion. I seconded it. So.
Yeah. I would just say, if we have any issues with the terms, as suggested, we can bring it back for further consideration next week.
Madam Chair, may I make one last statement before we vote? It seems that these requests are becoming a little bit more frequent to do reality television production around, especially the activities of the Sheriff's Department. I'm wondering whether or not this is one of those moments where we should be thinking about a policy that this county gives some thought to, in terms of how best to manage those requests and not treat them as one-offs and ad hoc responses and conditions from the DA. As I think, I'd definitely feel more comfortable if we did have a policy, so that we can gauge these as they present themselves.
It is my understanding that we do, in fact, have a policy, and that this falls in line with that policy.
When's the last time that that was kind of reviewed and updated?
That, I'm not sure. But we can, we can do that.
Okay. We might want to do that.
I believe it's not necessarily a Board-adopted policy. I could be wrong. I think it's a county executive-issued policy. And I think it was updated after Jail Birds, to ensure that any county facility or employee that's used, used to film these types of things follows that policy. So as Anne said, this does follow the policy, and we do have one. But of course, we could bring it to the Board if desired.
Let me ask you this. Was this a policy that was shaped by the prior administration?
It was certainly not shaped by me.
Correct. So that's even more reason to think, I think, to bring it back to the Board for, for some discussion.
We can take a look at the policy and then bring it back for you to adopt, so that it's a Board-adopted policy, if that's your wish.
That's, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah. Madam Chair, if I just could?
I would just like to interject something. I think part of this, you know, goes to some of these training and reentry programs that the sheriff is working on, and that they've had some wonderful success with in, you know, helping inmates deal with their stress and teaching them skills, reentry skills, and reducing recidivism. And so I think the motive behind these documentary films is wonderful. It's a way of, you know, bringing people in to see, you know, some of those programs, that, some of the good things that the sheriff is working on to help the inmates, you know, during their time, and provide vocational education, and actually a spiritual, it's a spiritual relief as well. The work that they're doing with the horses is amazing. So I think, personally, I think there's good, there's good things that could come out of this. I can understand, you know, my colleagues wanting to ensure that, you know, that the content is, is appropriate, and it's not damaging to the inmates. But I think to say that, you know, to just block it all out, because maybe one bad, you know, one, what someone perceives as something bad experience, there might, it could be that there's something good that could come out of this, that people can see good things. So I just wanted to throw that out there in the, in the conversation. Supervisor Natoli?
Yeah. And I would just note that, to part of your point, that this has been featured, I believe, in the Sacramento Bee story at some past date. And it's also, I think, been featured on some of the local television, you know, getting, you know, a much smaller, you know, amount of time allotted to it. But it has received some notoriety for the efforts, both rehabilitative efforts, but also, obviously, the rescue of the horses. I wanted to ask one other question, though. And I'm sorry, just, so access is being granted to Sacramento County Main Jail. The program is not located out there. Prisoners and those in custody are typically, you know, housed at the RCCC. I don't think we're transporting folks to, you know, participate in the program. So I guess I would just put forth, as you're looking at this, why they need access to the Sacramento County Main Jail. The other locations make sense, Work Release Facility and RCCC, as well as the Sheriff's Office. But I, I think that that needs to be clear, is the why they would need access to Sacramento County Main Jail for filming this program. So, thanks.
Okay. And Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you. Just want to make the one more point, following Supervisor Natoli. And again, good program. But there's a completely huge difference between journalistic endeavors and propaganda.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. And I just wanted to respond to the Chair's comments about the program. I totally agree. I think the, the horse training program is one that certainly has garnered a lot of positive attention from the Sacramento Bee and other media outlets. That's why I didn't want to necessarily outright vote against it. But I think putting as many safeguards in place as we can on just the concept of filming inside a locked facility, like one of our jails, and given the experience that we had last time, I don't think that that is necessarily an editorial about the program. That's, that is really, I think, trying to be as thoughtful as we can about who is going to have the ability to monitor and who's going to be responsible for the content before it is aired. That's all. That's, my intent to shape the motion the way it has been was not to, was not to belittle the program or to criticize the program by any means. It was simply to, I think, put in place what is necessary to make sure that we minimize the risk of having content that is going to be looked at as unfavorable for Sacramento County. And I think that's a response, that's a responsibility of the Board.
Thank you for your thoughtful leadership, Supervisor Serna. So we have a motion by Supervisor Serna. I believe Supervisor Natoli seconded that motion to approve with conditions. Please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Kennedy voting no.
Okay. And at this time, this meeting is adjourned for, not adjourned, recessed for five minutes.
Do you still have the balance of your consent matters?
I, I was under the impression they wanted to immediately leave and come back to do consent. I do have some comments on consent also. So, did I get the wrong impression?
May I respectfully ask the Board members to stay in chambers to finish the consent items?
Sure. Okay.
Thank you. Staff is still working on getting everything set up for the gentleman.
Well, that gives me time to make some comments. And so I just wanted to comment on a resolution that the Board will be voting on today in consent. We're fast approaching June 20, which is summer solstice, the longest day of the year. And today, our Board is proud to recognize the people who are facing Alzheimer's disease, and to also acknowledge and honor their caregivers as well. The entire month of June has been declared Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, and the longest day is to emphasize the need to help the public on this debilitating disease, and the need to increase efforts to combat its human and economic costs. Alzheimer's disease is a progressive neurodegenerative brain disorder that tragically robs individuals of their memories and leaves, leads to cognitive decline, resulting in functional, emotional, behavioral impairment, which is always fatal. And it is the third-leading cause of death in California today. California caregivers devote 884 million hours of unpaid assistance to family members, valued at over $18 billion in nongovernmental financial support. African Americans, Latinx, and women are disproportionately impacted by Alzheimer's disease and have higher prevalence rates in general population. Disparities in detecting, detecting the diagnosis persist, resulting in less than 50% of individuals affected by the disease receiving formal diagnosis, with age being the greatest risk factor, Alzheimer's, which is also known, which is known to cause, which has no known cause, cure, or prevention. Californians have invested more than $25 million towards research and individuals, with individuals living with Alzheimer's disease, and their caregivers need acknowledgement. I have not personally experienced it, but in my background, as nursing background, I've seen it. And with friends, I've seen it. And it's, it's a heartbreaking dilemma, not only for the person who's experiencing and that losing control of your thoughts and your life, but also to the family and the caregivers who, who have to participate intimately in that. And so I wanted to ask everyone, if you know anyone who has the Alzheimer's dementia or that type of dilemma, give them a little extra TLC to brighten their day and try to find ways to lighten their load. So this is our month to, to think about it and to encourage those who are living with Alzheimer's. And so with that, I don't have any more Board comments on consent. And I will ask for a motion to approve all consent items except for item two. I believe we're addressing two after consent?
So moved.
Or, we've pulled, no, we pulled item two. It's included in consent.
No.
No, we're pulling item two, because that, that needs to be discussed separately.
Yes. So we're, we're voting on consent minus item two.
And I second the motion.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, I did not, I don't have Alzheimer's, but I did not hear the motion.
Supervisor Desmond got you.
Desmond, motion. Natoli, second. Please vote.
Great. That's a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
And so that was items one through 44, with the exception of two and 36, because you took a separate vote on 36.
Okay. And so at this time, I'm going to recess for five minutes while we arrange phone lines for two supervisors.
This meeting is hereby called back to order. And at this time, do we need to call roll?
I do. Okay. Supervisors Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And Serna?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. And at this time, I'm going to ask, I know we have some off-agenda speakers, and I'm going to call for off-agenda.
Okay. So I'm going to ask staff to go ahead and start transferring in, or actually, we have in-person, off-agenda first, and then we'll take the callers over the phone. Thank you.
Yes. And I'm going to call three at a time, and I'll ask you, in the order that I call you, if you can begin to line up. There's some marks on the steps, and that way we can expedite. You'll have two minutes. I'll give you 15-second notice before your time is up. And our first three are Annette Deglo, Tracy Cumming, and Marilyn Trow. And I hope I said that right, Marilyn. Good morning, Annette.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. Annette Deglo, a member of the Sacramento Faculty at Sacramento City College. I'm here in that capacity. Last evening, I mailed to each of the supervisors a copy of a letter that I have sent to Sacramento County Council, asking for a comprehensive review of the Los Rios Community College District's refusal to accept my K-12 service credit, consistent with California Education Code 87416. Why I'm coming to County Council is, in 1978, it was Sacramento County Council that accepted my hire date as 1962, only to have the district, three years later, state that the law did not permit granting service credit for K-12 service, and reduced my service credit by two years. Then, one month later, the Los Rios District Board accepted and approved K-12 service credits for seven of my colleagues, but excluded me from the process. I am at that point where I'd like to retire, get my records squared away, and I want those two years of service credit. The Los Rios District has spent The Los Rios District has spent, in my opinion, I think if you do a comprehensive study, you will find they spent over $1 million keeping me from having two years of service credit. I think it is time that County Council do a comprehensive review, find out why I have been denied my service credit for 40 years. I have provided all the documents I think necessary to review it, and again, will state that if you review that, you will find-
You have 15 seconds.
-that the public resources that we have spent have been inappropriately applied to denying me two years of service credit. I hope that, and I'm here today simply to ask you to review my documents and support my request for County Council. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw you were working with Supervisor Natoli. Is that correct Supervisor?
Right, and he spoke with Supervisor Desmond as well, and I believe County Council Travis would review this.
Yes, I've received the email, and then Ms. Deglow just gave me hard copies, which I appreciate, and I will review and return her message. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Tracy Cumming.
Actually, I'm speaking for Tracy Cumming. We want to change the order.
Okay, Marilyn? Are you Marilyn? I'm sorry?
Brenda?
Brenda.
Pandoz?
Okay, do I have a slip?
There's a slip for me.
What's your name, Brenda? Can you step up to the podium Brenda? Yes.
Brenda Pandoz.
Brenda Pandoz?
Yes.
Okay.
I have-
You have two minutes.
I have paperwork for you guys to follow along with what I'm wanting to talk about. Should I give it to?
I would give it to the clerk, and you have, I'm going to just-
Start it over.
Give it to the clerk, and they'll give it to us, and then you can, you have two minutes.
Um. I speak on the behalf of the residents of Sacramento County, and we are here today, and many are here today with me, and we're watching this meeting live. Our mission is to restore our state of California and local community, giving back power to the people. It's been far too long that government entities have failed to represent the electors of this county in a capacity in which we now demand. We have stood back and allowed state and local government to make decisions on our behalf without consideration of what we, the people, want and need. Instead, state and local government have far overreached your power, and it's time today this comes to an end. We are here to watch, listen, and engage in every single decision made on our behalf, and if changes need to be made, we will make them. We are here to ask for you to support our efforts and align in our requests. As we are electors of this state and county, we have collectively decided to take action to regain our state, county, city, and most importantly, our freedoms. We are here today specifically to address a few points that have recently come to our attention and feel it's imperative that we see resolution within 30 days. We respectfully request that Sacramento County pass an ordinance that explains in detail how AB 262 will be implemented in Sacramento County. Specifically, we need clarification that Section 120175.5 will never be interpreted to permit county public health officer to remove citizens of Sacramento County from their residence under any circumstance unless that citizen's own primary care physician or physician elected by the resident has determined that the resident is currently infected with a communicable disease that poses a significant threat to the community, and that citizen must be afforded all due process of law under the rights, under the law. We are willing to work with the county-
You have 15 seconds.
-on the language to be adopted and even provide them with the draft to interpret the California Health and Safety Code, Section 21075.5, needs to be adopted. We submit that if the Board members cannot agree to adopt such limitations within the following 30 days by way of addressing the public at subsequent Board of Service meetings' agendas items, we give a serious abridgement of freedoms that California has undergone over the course of the past 15 months. Then efforts will be undertaken to remove and/or recall those Board members who cannot agree to this extremely reasonable request.
Thank you. There will be many times available for public comment, so everyone who's doing public comment, if you can try to, you know, wrap your comments into those short, we do this to make sure everyone has a chance to speak. Thank you. Okay, Tracy is not coming. Is Tracy gone? Okay, Tracy will come later. Tracy, I'll call you later. Marilyn is next. Marilyn Trow. Did I say it right?
Truex.
Truex, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Truex. I'm here representing the County of Sacramento and the residents. We believe there is a planned systematic attempt to force residents to get the shot through AB 262, AB 23, excuse me, AB 389, and Patient Access Interoperability Final Rule, CMS 911-5F. We would like to understand how AB 262 that was passed on October 19, 2019, is related to the Sacramento County 2122 fiscal budget, which supports CMS 911-5-F. CMS final rule requires hospitals, counties, and physicians to provide to the government patients medical information, including but not limited to patient's current address, medical, clinical notes, and most concerning, our immunization records. AB 262's language is vague but clear. It gives the local county health officer full discretion and power to issue orders to other governmental entities within the local health officer's jurisdiction to take any action the local health officer deems necessary to control the spread of communicable disease using taxpayers' money. Any action can include removing you or family members from your home if the California governor or HHS local agency deems any person a threat to public health. AB 389 authorizes a fire protection district to enter into a written subcontract with a private ambulance service and authorizes a county to develop an emergency medical services program and requires a county developing such a program to designate a local EMS agency that is required to be the county health department, an agency established and operated by the county. Article 11, Sections 4 and 5 of the California Constitution provide that charter cities and counties may develop ordinances to govern local affairs, and further, that ordinances passed by these entities take precedence over conflicting state laws as to local affairs, such as the county health officer's decisions surrounding the implementation of Cal HSC 1201-
You have 10 seconds.
75.5. We, the people of Sacramento County, request that you, the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors-
Please wrap up.
-pass an ordinance that explains how AB 262 will be implemented within this county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well done, and I was a little late in warning you. Sorry about that. Okay, next we have Tracy Cumming, followed by Tiffany Noe, followed by Richard Re-
Ropiak.
Ropiak. Thank you.
My name is Tracy Cumming, and I would like to continue on the last two speakers. Basically, as a consequence of foregoing, we respectfully request that the county approve, adapt, and ratify an ordinance that clearly interprets Cal HSC 120175.5 as follows. Section 120175.5 will never be interpreted to, number one, permit the county public health officer to remove citizens of Sacramento County from their residence under any circumstance unless that citizen's own primary care physician or physician elected by the resident to be removed has determined that the said resident is currently infected with communicable disease that poses a significant threat to the community. And number two, that citizen must be afforded all due process rights under the law irrespective of any emergency powers Sacramento County purports to be operating under. We also are requesting that Sacramento County Board of Supervisors take our concerns to the State Assembly by submitting our letter, which is in the packet that you received, that requesting immediate stop to any further action of AB 262. And just to reiterate, AB 262's language is vague but clear, and it gives a local county health officer full discretion and power to issue orders to other governmental entities within the local health officer's jurisdiction to take any action the local health officer deems necessary to control the spread of the communicable disease using taxpayers' money. Any action can include removing you or your family members from your home if the California governor or the Health and Human Services local agency deems any person a threat to public health. We, thank you.
Tiffany.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Noe. I'm a resident of Sacramento County. AB 389 authorizes a fire protection district to enter into a written subcontract with a private ambulance service. AB 389 authorizes a county to develop an emergency medical services program and requires a county developing such a program to designate a local EMS agency that is required to be the county health department, an agency established and operated by the county. AB 389 grants a county to contract with a fire protection district governed by the county's Board of Supervisors and provided those services through a written subcontract with a private ambulance service. Residents and taxpayers of Sacramento County will be paying to be removed from their homes if the California governor or Health and Human Services local agency deems any person a threat to public health. Article 6, Section 4 and 5 of the California Constitution provide that charter cities and counties may develop ordinances to govern local affairs and further, that ordinances passed by these entities take precedence over conflicting state laws as to local affairs, such as the county health officer's decisions surrounding the implementation of the Cal Health and Safety Code. We, the people of Sacramento County, request you, the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, pass an ordinance that explains how AB 262, now called the California Health and Safety Code, Section 120175.5, will be implemented within this county. As a consequence of the foregoing, we respectfully request that this county approve, adopt, and ratify an ordinance that clearly interprets California Health and Safety Code, Section 120175.5 as follows. Section 120175.5 will never be interpreted to permit the county public health officer to remove citizens of Sacramento County-
You have 15 seconds.
...from their residences under any circumstance. And two, that citizen must be afforded all due process rights under the law irrespective of any emergency powers Sacramento County prefers to be operating under. Thank you.
Clerk staff are doing a great job.
And D-Tech is helping us out big time.
And D-Tech is helping. Thank you so much.
My name is Richard. I represent the Free Nationals of Sacramento. I represent the visitors of Sacramento and the businesses of Sacramento. I want to start out, I'm talking about the rules about this building here. This is our building. It's built for us to address you of our grievances. It's not built for you. It's not built for your pleasures or your convenience. It's not built for you to berate us and go run like cowards without understanding that we have medical exemptions to wearing masks. That's at the beginning of it, let alone the truth, as you've had months to understand that masks do nothing to stop the spread of a virus. Read the warning label. Mr. Kennedy, if you can even hear me, quit being so afraid. Now, on the rules, we'll start out right now. That gold tassel on that flag, that does not put us under American rule, that puts us under the World Bank rule, under the British flag rule, not our own. Take that gold tassel off, just like the flag flying out there. Don't have the gold tassel. Only problem with the flag flying out there, it should be upside down, because we're under duress. But we need to make our amish to our own country, to our own free people. Now, these rules about masks and social distancing, you guys have had months to understand the truth that we've been saying over and over again. You're being duped. You're being duped, okay? This whole nonsense is not the American way. And for any of y'all to say there's some kind of compelling reason to ignore our Constitution, let alone those of you who took the oath to the Constitution, they can't even recite the beginning of it, to uphold it, to uphold the truth of our nation, that liberty is more important than any of this fear that you have. They were one nation that's under God. Do you want to abandon that truth of being under God? That's your business. But don't try to shove it down our throats by berating us because God tells us we're His creation. This is His image that we shine. And we're not to cover it with masks because you guys want to live in fear of something that's not even the truth. Have you seen the emails put out by Mr. Fauci, you know, the Fauci-Auci guy? Have you read the videos or seen the videos about Bill Gates and how he wants to exterminate two-thirds of the world's population-
You have 15 seconds.
...to stop the warming of our globe? He said it himself. He's behind the whole madness. Come on, man. You're our local representatives. You stand in the way of that tyranny.
Please wrap it up.
Please help us.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Merrill Meadows, followed by Desiree McGuire.
Sorry.
It's okay. I'll just stick it in my pocket.
Hi, my name's Merrill Meadows. I'm here also to request immediate stop of any further action on ABS, or sorry, AB 262. They've already said a lot about it, so I'm actually going to also go on to, and I don't know if this is on response of the COVID, but I'm going to mention about the COVID numbers and how we as people, as our understanding, that to declare a state of emergency, the threat has to overwhelm the resources. Emergency, the threat has, sorry, to overwhelm the resources. The number of COVID-19 does not and never did support the current state of emergency in our state and county. So why are we in a state of emergency? Let's start with the inaccuracy of the PCR test used to determine if a symptomatic or asymptomatic person was affected by COVID-19. It is known, sorry, it is now known, the PCR test was never designed to detect pathogens and is 100% inaccurate at 35 cycles. All PCR tests monitored by the CDC were set at 37 to 45 cycles. The CDC acknowledges that the tests over the 28 cycles are not allowed for a positive reliable result. This invalidates over 90% of the alleged COVID cases detecting using the incorrect test, meaning our case numbers were inflated, creating fear in the American people, not only masks. Not only are the case numbers unreliable, but we also cannot even trust the reported number of deaths caused by this virus. According to an article just released June 6 by the Epoch Times in Alameda County, California, the number of COVID-19 deaths fell by 25% after health officials changed their mythology, sorry, methodology for total mortality count, removing deaths that weren't a direct result of the disease. Their count dropped by 411 deaths. Alameda County previously included any persons who died while infected with the virus in the total COVID-19 deaths for the county. For example, someone who tested positive for the virus-
You have 15 seconds.
...before dying in a car accident would still have been counted towards a COVID-19 death tool. It is reasonable to assume that Alameda County is not the responsible county that made this, sorry, error. Not only were they reported deaths that were not caused by COVID-19-
Can you please wrap up your comments?
...but they were also using the PCR test within the unreliable 37 to 40 cycle range. I ask you to remove the county from the state of emergency it is currently in. Knowing the information that has been used to support this status is inaccurate and unreliable. Thank you.
Thank you. Desiree McGuire.
My name's Desiree McGuire. Ditto to what just Merrill Meadows just said, our resources have been unreliable. Mr. Kennedy himself talked about the difference of journalism and integrity and propaganda, and it seems he and many of you still are bought into the propaganda of it all, which concerns me because, as my other constituents had said, there's a planned systemic force to attempt to remove us from our residents to also get a shot through the AB 262, AB 389. As a consequence of all of the foregoing, of everything that's already been explained about those two bills, we respectfully request that this- about those two bills, we respectfully request that this county, you guys, adopt and ratify an ordinance that clearly interprets Cal HSC 120175.5 as follows. This will never be interpreted to permit the county public health officer to remove citizens of Sacramento County from their residence under any circumstance unless that citizen's own primary care physician or a physician elected by the resident to be removed has determined that said resident is currently infected with a communicable disease that poses a significant threat, which this does not, to the community. And that citizen, number two, must be afforded all due process rights under the law irrespective of any emergency powers Sacramento County purports to be operating under. We are also requesting the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors take our concerns to the State Assembly by submitting our letter that's been given to you today, a letter that was provided requesting the immediate stop on any further action on AB 262. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna ask staff to go ahead and transfer the first caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Board of Directors. My name is Charlie Solt. I'm the Director of Public Employees for Local 39, the Chief Negotiator for the county's 800 employees and the Operations and Maintenance Group. Our understanding is that the county negotiators will be giving the Board an update today during closed session regarding the status of negotiations. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to you beforehand. In order to explain the primary obstacle to reaching an agreement with the county, please refer to the chart Local 39 provided to the Clerk of the Board. In this chart, this is showing what our bargaining team members in the second to left-hand column, what the county's offer will result in a actually take-home pay is the second to last column, generally less than $10 a week. The Operations and Maintenance rank-and-file employees are among the county's front-like frontline workers. They maintain the county infrastructure, including the streets, solid waste, airport, fleet, animal shelters, landfill, et cetera. These employees cannot and have not worked remotely. They showed up to work every day during the pandemic, like the police officers and the firefighters. The county's refused to entertain any economic proposal other than the one provided in the chart. The county claims the Board of Directors has not provided the county negotiators additional bargaining authority. On behalf of the 800 employees in the Operations and Maintenance Unit, Local 39 asks you to review the chart and to find it within your hearts, we believe you can find it within the budget, to provide the county negotiators with additional authority to work collaboratively with Local 39 to provide these frontline employees with a meaningful improvement to their compensation. And just by the way, these, these increases they're gonna receive will be swallowed up by the healthcare in January. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
The Constitution and California law requires that you immediately terminate the declared local emergency due to COVID. Government Code, Section 8558, subsection C, defines local emergency as, in pertinent part, the duly proclaimed existence of conditions of disaster or of extreme peril to the safety of persons or property within the territorial limits of a county, city, and county or city caused by a pandemic or epidemic, which is likely to be beyond the control of the services, personnel, equipment, and facilities of that political subdivision, and require the combined forces of other political subdivisions to combat. Government Code, Section 8630, subsection D, requires that this Board terminate the local emergency at the quote "earliest possible date that it conditions warrant." Nothing related to COVID shows the existence of conditions of disaster or of extreme peril to the safety of persons and property. Nothing related to COVID is beyond the control of the services, personnel, equipment, and facilities of that political subdivision that require the combined forces of other political subdivisions to combat. There are therapeutics such as vitamin D therapy, hydroxychloroquine, and ivermectin. Even without the therapeutics, the average survivor rate is 99.9%, which is per the CDC, and that includes presumed deaths. The county positivity rate is only approximately 2%. There is an experimental shot for those that choose it. There is absolutely no strain on local government resources. Masks, the experimental shot, and COVID testing are all not FDA-approved. Instead, they are all being administered and regulated under the emergency use authorization.
You have 15 seconds.
Even the CDC says masks are not necessary, yet California and Hawaii now stand alone as the only states defying the CDC. We ask that you terminate the local emergency immediately and remove all COVID restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
I want to share with everybody in that room that's refusing to wear a mask, that I know somebody that would empathize with you all greatly. He's my uncle, lifelong businessman, Trump supporter, and also a COVID hopes believer for a long time. He didn't take COVID seriously either last year. Loved to socialize, was absolutely, like, a great guy, loved to, like, loved to joke around and have fun. And then, when his wife, my aunt, came down with COVID and had to be put in the hospital, he didn't even feel the effects at first. He felt, he said it felt like a sinus infection. And then, it wasn't until about a week later, after he initially came down, that he ended up in the hospital on life support. Put in iron lung because of the crushed glass effect that this virus does to you, causing your lungs to literally bleed out and choke. He choked on his own blood for almost two weeks before he, like, before he was finally taken off life support and passed away. That was literally just four days before Christmas when that happened. He didn't take it seriously either. But now he's gone. And hearing you all, somebody that has actually served this country since, like, after 9/11, listening to you all whining about wearing three layers of cloth on your face, staying six feet away from your friends and neighbors, I can honestly tell you-
You have 15 seconds.
None of you in that room that are whining about this right now are being Americans. You're fucking un-American, you're cowards, and you're hypocrites, who really don't give a fuck about anybody but yourself.
Can you please wrap up your comments, please?
Yeah. To you, Sue Frost, really, fuck you for not enforcing the mask mandate and just taking care of each other. America isn't a place, it's a people.
That is your last public comment.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will move on to the next item, number two.
Let me read that into the record again. Item two is, "County of Sacramento Community Facilities Districts Provide for the Levy of Fiscal Year 2021-22 Special Taxes for 12 Community Facility Districts."
I'm sure.
Trying to see who is-
I had asked-
Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am chair. I for one had asked that this be put over for discussion, taken off the consent calendar, and I would just say I had a chance over the last few days to spend some time with our staff, talking about what's before us, and I don't know if you wanted to first have a brief presentation. In particular, there are 12 different districts that are included as a part of the report, but the one I wanted to focus on here this morning was the proposed increase in the assessments for the CFD Community Facility District number 2004-2, which is the Landscape Maintenance CFD, and there's attachments in our report. I know there was notification sent out to folks throughout the county who would be affected by the proposed increase, and so it may be that you wanted to have a brief staff report, otherwise I would be happy to, or I would be willing to go into some of the questions. Again, I've had a number of the questions that I've asked, have responded to, and I appreciate that we have folks in the audience that can do that. So I didn't know if, in order to set the stage, you wanted to have a brief presentation on that element.
Yeah, I was hoping for that, and I think Supervisor Desmond is also asking for that.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli for setting the stage a little bit. I got a little bit lost in my papers here.
So I got a lot of papers here, too.
So yes, you did set the stage very well for that. This is an annual report that comes before the Board to set the levy for the 12 CFD districts within the county. And so each year what we do is we take a look at the need either for debt service, because many of these are bonded districts, or just the services that are provided within each of the districts. And so then, as we go through that, we analyze what are the needs for the, to provide for the services or the debt service in each district. And through that, working with the special districts office, we come up with what is the levy on each of the parcels within the district. And so yes, one of the things we had done is we had done some analysis specifically on that landscape maintenance district, and we had done some, you know, we had looked at what is the history behind it, and we had seen that in, in prior years, we had actually reduced the levy significantly in that district. As it turns out, as the district grows and as there are more parcels that come into the district, there are also additional services that need to be provided for within that district. And so over the past year, two years, three years, sorry, we started in 2019 with an increase of 50% in that district. We came to the Board at that time and mentioned that we would do a process by increasing the levy by 50% and then going with the 3% standard, you know, increase that would be linked with CPI increase, and then coming back with an additional 50% increase. As you'll notice, the current levy in that Landscape Maintenance District does not fully support the services load in that district, and there is still a draw on the reserve in this current year. And, and that's with the 50% increase incorporated into the number runs.
And I just wanted to say that the 50% increase sounded really big until I received an explanation from our acting county executive, who said it was set at a certain level, and then it was reduced by 20%, and then it was reduced by 30% because they had more money than they needed. So it, it's gone down over time significantly. I think it's important to note that because we're just covering costs, basically.
And we do have a chart that shows the history in this district. So yeah, it's on the, and I don't know if I have it pointed in the right direction.
And for anyone that's following, that chart was just sent forward this morning, so it may, I don't know if it's been posted. I trust it's been posted at the clerk's office because this, I think, was as a result of conversations with members of the Board. So this is, again, very, very recent. It was not a part of the staff report, right?
That's correct. It was not a part of the staff report and was developed over the last couple of days.
Yeah.
As you'll note, in 2011, the levy, I believe, was approximately 85% of the maximum tax within the district. And then, so that's the high point for each of the various zones. The low point was in 2018, and then we've been increasing it since then. And you see that the recommended is shaded in blue here. We also included in this, at the very top, you'll notice, the number of parcels that are impacted by each of these rates. So the, the one with the majority of the parcels in it is Zone 1, and they pay the lowest rate within the district.
Could I just ask on that point, it may be important for distinction there, they pay the lowest. It obviously has a greater number of the parcels, but, and I appreciate that staff has taken some time, ma'am chair, certainly, actually a couple hours in two separate discussions with them, but there are different elements to the various zones. As I understand it, and just in talking again this morning with staff before this meeting, that Zone 1, for example, may include center medians, landscape medians, and maybe some other areas that are called out for maintenance, but the adjacent areas, the landscape corridors in these communities, and this is largely in North Vineyard, not entirely, but, or in the Vineyard community, but then South Gate, through a separate assessment, takes on the maintenance of the landscape corridors adjacent to sound walls and such, and residents pay for that as well. So it's not just, there's not just one fee that covers everything in, in those areas. And then parks may or may not have a property tax base and/or separate assessments as well. And so, caller, I don't know, without parsing this too much and getting into all six zones, but I, and again, I've received commentary from a handful of folks on Zone 1 and Zone 5 in particular, but we have this variation. So maybe you could just offer the distinction, because this is not all-inclusive of what folks might pay for landscaped areas, either usable areas and/or areas that are there for aesthetics or to soften transportation corridors and so forth. So I don't know if you'd be the one to speak to that, but I think it's important to know because one of the, it's a very low assessment in Zone 1. That's not the only assessment they pay for landscaping that adjoins their community areas, because they also pay a separate assessment, I believe, to South Gate through the parks CFD that the districts have, so. Or Melrose, I guess.
Sure that either Bob or Ron might be able to speak to that a little more than I could.
Good morning.
Morning, Ron.
Chair Frost, Board members. Ron Bicari, Director of Transportation. Yes, what you mentioned is correct. Some, the landscape maintenance needs to be covered under some sort of, some way of paying for it. So when, excuse me, when landscape maintenance is annexed into the district, we look at the amount of landscape coming in, divided by the number of parcels, and then it shows what zone you fit in. So that's what we determine, how we determine what zone you'll be placed in. But it is true that also, along, you know, drainage facilities, it's sometimes South Gate, that, under the Parks District.
Drainage and/or the corridors.
Yeah, so it depends. I mean, what, what is true is that the landscape needs to be paid somewhere, but as, as the landscaping that is annexed into this district, we, we then make sure that we pay in the appropriate fashion. So looking at the Board, some of the inquiries that came in, there are some questions that are coming up that really don't pertain to this item, but we'll also, I do want to let you know that the items that came in, we'll get a group of us together, including Michael Peterson from Water Resources, Transportation, Mr. Hartwig, and also South Gate, and make sure that we address all questions, whether or not they're part of this item or not.
Ron, I just, and I appreciate you responding. The point I wanted to make about Zone 1 is largely in, in District 5, although District 2 and District 1 may have portions of that and maybe a couple of small elements of that zone, but that, when it comes to particularly the Vineyard area, that the South Gate Recreation and Park District uses landscape and lighting assessment districts that are formed as a part of, of the developments that are only approved, and they, so folks are paying two separate assessments. Here it looks like it's, well, it's only going from $20 to $30, but that's not the sole piece that, that's what they pay under this CFD, under Community Facilities District, for the portions that the county maintains. However, they pay a separate assessment, and I don't know what the number is, and again, that's what was before us today, but it's not like they have some artificially low and they get this, you know, you know, they pay 30 while somebody else in, you know, in Zone 6 pays almost $400 under this proposal, that, you know, I don't know what's all included in, in each of the zones that we have here, and you've talked about it generally, but I wanted to be clear about Zone 1, that there's another layer, at least one more layer, if not maybe potentially a second layer. I don't know if they have a separate L and L for their, more broadly for the parks or drainage maintenance fees, but certainly from the standpoint of those landscape quarters where South Gate's a partner, people pay for that as well. As you say, there has to be a source to maintain it, but. So they might pay 30 here, but they might be paying, but they're paying X, in, you know, as a part of their overall tax bill, they're paying an additional- know, as a part of their overall tax bill, they're paying an additional element to maintain other parts of the streetscape that are adjacent to, you know, major thoroughfares and other landscape areas in the community.
Yeah, understood. I agree with that. We, you know, we take a great effort in trying to keep the cost down in two ways, in recognition of that. There's, there's two ways. One, you know, we try to provide a level of service that's acceptable without running up the costs. Of course, you could always do more landscaping. But also to expand on what Colin presented earlier, as far as the, the chart that's up on the board. In 2010, or, sorry, 2011, in recognition of that, and of course, the economy, there was a reserve that had built up, and, and we, we tried, we, this was a process that we went through to try to actually start to eat into the reserves, to try to help reduce fees for a while. And so we reduced these fees as, as much as possible. So you can see as it, as it ratchets down, we were really trying to, to make, to kind of ease that cost to the constituents. In 2018, we, we saw that we, our reserves were actually, and, and we needed to start ratcheting back up because we, so we came up with this plan to how we come out of that. But, and I guess just some examples are, as Colin, Colin mentioned, 85% of the maximum tax rate. What's being suggested here is to go back to 40%. But if you look at a comparison of 2022 to 2011, that's around 62% of what we were charging in 2011. So we did try to ratchet down, eat up reserves, try to make it easy as we could, and we got down to a point where now we have to start ratcheting back up. But we are still at 62%. And I hope that, I hope that after this increment, if, if it's approved by the board, there'll be just small adjustments, and hopefully the CPI will be enough to keep up with the cost, and also to maintain the level, acceptable level of service.
If I could answer, just one other question while Ron's there.
Of course.
50%, and again, certainly having the numbers up there, and I appreciate the fact that you actually have numbers, so we, we see those, and we see them in the context of a, of a decades period of time. One of the things that was pointed out in the staff report, and again, it was in the briefing I had yesterday, was that you look, yes, you'd come to the staff, you'd come back, you'd come to us two years ago, and obviously nobody anticipated what we would, you know, you know, be experiencing over the, you know, past nearly a year and a half. But you, you contemplated a 50% increase this year. Now, in my conversations with you and other staff yesterday, you said, well, you know, if you broke this out and did it, you know, you'd have to do three 25% increases. I guess my, my question would be is that if you did, you know, just assuming we cut this in half and did 25 and 25, there doesn't have to be intervening year in between, but I do think that, you know, there's been folks that have experienced a lot of financial and economic hardship. And one of the things here that is, is always a point of my attention, anyway, is that this appears on the tax bill. So this is lenable, and, you know, the county's going to get its money, these districts, some of them, as Colin said, are bonded for, and so there's a bond commitment, and so we peel them off through a teeter program if, in order to make sure that the obligations are met under the bonding. I'm not so, I don't think this, with the landscape, this is just, you know, basically we, we collect and we provide the service. And, and I will say that generally, I think folks are, you know, not only appreciative, but, you know, you know, get value for the dollars they're paying. We've had some anomalies, and they're coming to your attention, and Ron, I know you and Brett and Loopy and others will, you know, see to it that we tend to those issues, and then maybe in other districts as well. But my, the bottom line is here is that this goes on the tax bill. And so there's no, you know, debating, when it shows up, it shows up, and if you don't pay it, or you only pay, you can only afford to pay a portion of it, then you get behind your, you know, because, and that's a, that's a big bill in, in a lot of these newly developing areas in order to accommodate, and it's included in this report. Police services, in, in some cases, obviously, parks and other, other amenities that, you know, folks, you know, certainly have as accoutrements to their neighborhood, but they're paying for that annually. And, and we actually see in some of these where they had Melo Russes, we're retiring that debt after 20 or 25-year periods, which again is a, is a positive. But in this case, this is ongoing, and I appreciate the evaluation that's gone into it. My question being, I guess, to hone in on it, if we took half of what was being recommended, but did it over a two-year period, it would soften some of the impact, again. And for folks, particularly in, in the zone where they're going to get a $130 increase, it would be half of that. I guess I was not real clear yesterday. You said it would have to be then, you know, another 50% higher in order to accommodate that. But if you did back-to-back years, we still have to have this before us next year. But it was seen to me that would be a way to, I think, approach it. You still have to, a little bigger draw on reserves, but it would allow us to get there over a two-year period versus, you contemplated like a three-year, I think, in our conversation on the phone, so.
Yes. So I guess let me, let me say that when, you know, when we set off on this path in 2019 to do the 50% increase and then take a year with just the CPI, and then come back this year with the final 50%, we did, we did recognize that there would probably be some subsequent increases also. We didn't think that that would completely solve. And as you can see, we are hitting reserves even with that, to continue the implementation of that plan. We are going to be reducing reserves by, I believe it's 37,400 and something, somewhere around there. I should say between 38 and 30, 37, $38,000. So we're not right-sized yet. So, so we do, we are cognizant of the fact that we do have to evaluate this next year. We're not there yet. To answer your other question, we did look at other alternatives, recognizing again, and when we, when we started on this journey, it was 2011, the economy was bad, but we certainly recognize what's happened over the last year, over a year. So we did look at other, other opportunities or other ways of doing this. And I will say that you mentioned 25, 25. Because of the, the time value of getting the money upfront and depleting the reserves that, basically the year missed, it, it won't work to do a 25, 25. But I will give you some other options that we looked at, all which lead to a greater value at the end. And meaning that in order to get the same value out of what we're suggesting here, the 50% this year, you would have to do a 35, 25. I'm sorry, a 30, 25. You'd have to do 30 this year and come back with 25, which is another 5%. We looked at such things as 25, take a year off, 25, take a year off, and we were hoping that maybe that would only have to be 10. But because of those two gap years, it's actually another 25 to get to the same position. So you're at 75%, not the 50. We looked at 417 or 18s, being, you know, 68% or so. So we, we did play around with those numbers. There is the opportunity to do something different, absolutely. What led us to stay on the same path that we were on in 2019 was that then the rate, hopefully we find that the rate, in, in all cases, we're in the same position of being, you know, watching to see if we can just adjust by the incremental CPI. So we, we chose to stay on the same path we were directed to be on in 2019 and would, and come in with that recommendation to continue that path, because it leads to the smaller fee when we come out of this and sort of get right-sized. But, but there is other options.
Last question then. So to your point, though, so what you're proposing would be a 50%, a CPI, and then taking a look at it in the next out year, I guess would be 23, 24, 22, 23, 23, 24. If we did a 30 and a 25, it would be fairly close to the, to the, the same, because even with the 50, you've got a CPI built in for next year, and that's going to take you to probably 53% anyway versus 55%. And I just, again, in, in having thought about this and heard all you, you know, that, you know, you've conveyed to me, and I appreciate the work that's gone into this, it just seems that we can, these are extraordinary times. And, and it was the same, same, it was a different situation, but certainly during the recession. And I, I wanted to give credit again, because certainly you, staff, this board, and looking at the economic impacts, and certainly where we were carrying a reserve that was approaching $700,000 in this, in, in this particular district, we drew on that over the years and were able to, you know, maintain service levels, you know, satisfactorily, you know, throughout, you know, for the most part, through the course of better part of a decade. And again, it's, you know, this has the ability to fluctuate, and I appreciate the fact that this, you know, you would, you know, what you've said many times, it's 40% of the maximum tax. But I do think that as we look at this year, you know, again, recognizing it might require a little bit of a bump, but in the two-year timeframe, that what you're saying, if it was a 30 and a 25 versus a 50 now and a CPI, it's pretty comparable. Is that accurate?
Correct. I mean, it's taking to, it would be 60% over time. I was keeping the CPI portion out of it, just trying to look at the incremental adjustment.
Yeah, I wasn't putting the CPI.
But the CPI is relatively minimal, so.
Right.
Yeah, it would be, if you did a 30, 25, we would still be in the same situation of, you know, hoping to just have small adjustments from here on out.
Right.
We think we're close enough to right-size that we, but, but we're not saying there won't be a future adjustment. We just hope that they're more gradual.
Right. No, and I think, and again, you take it as, leave this annually, this board gets a chance to review it, and obviously I appreciate the fact that notices were sent out to folks. So that's all the questions I have at this point. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. And Supervisor Desmond has a question, and I'll then come to Supervisor Kennedy and Serna to see if you have any.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you very much, Ron. I want to echo a lot of the, the statements and the concerns of Supervisor Natoli, and I really appreciate him bringing this, that matter to our attention like this. And appreciate your call yesterday. We had a conversation about it. I, I like, I'm definitely intrigued by that idea to spread the, the rate increase out over two years. I understand it might be a little more bump, but, but I think we, we have to keep in mind, as we look at any of these rate increases, is look at the cumulative effect. You know, one of my first meetings, one of my first official acts was to vote in favor of raising rates for, for solid waste and recycling. And so this may not look like a, a, a big amount of money, but I think the cumulative impact is, has a big impact on people. And so I would certainly be willing to consider spreading that 50% rate hike out over two years with the 30 and 25.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Kennedy or Serna, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
Not at this time, Madam Chair. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. And do we have any public comment?
You did not have any public comments for this item?
We did receive one, I think, one written public comment, so.
Two or three, I think we got.
Yeah.
Written comments. Okay. Well, Madam Chair, if you want to bring it back to the board, I'd be prepared to make a motion, recognize anytime we raise fees, obviously it has an impact, but obviously there are services being provided. And again, I appreciate the work that's been done, certainly to help inform this board, the outreach that was done to the affected property owners, and I think, you know, the fiduciary responsibility people take seriously, but also the maintenance effort. And I know Brett Krieger and, and, and Loopy are in the audience today, and I, again, they've been responsive over time. We got, this did, by sending out the notices, got, called attention to a couple of areas that probably needed a bit of attention, and I know that you're going to be attentive to that. So again, with that, keeping in mind, I think maintaining these investments, they do have, you know, an element to, you know, certainly the neighborhood aesthetic, and I think reflect a well on neighborhoods when they're well-maintained, and the trash is taking, you know, cleaned up, and that they're pruned and watered, and landscape is replaced. And I trust that this will sustain that effort, hopefully, hopefully save, you know, up our game a bit when it comes to this and, and keep us in that mode. So with that being said, recognizing the impacts, but I would, again, can we adopt a two-year approach here, or we just do this year to year? So I guess I need to ask council, can we, or I guess with an intent to, to address it next year or so.
I have an appreciation for the fact that you were trying to save everyone money, and it would cost them 5% less if we just do it. That would be what I would prefer if it was me, but.
Yeah. Well, it's not quite 5% less, because we wouldn't be getting the CPI in that off-year. Right? So it's.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, so they, what, what is true is that, you know, again, they will only pay for the landscaping effort that they receive, and all plans are considering the same level of effort. And so you can also look at the fact that they would pay less this, this year, right? So they get some, get some money savings there. So we, we're just trying to size this correctly, but Supervisor Natoli, that would work. And with, if that is what the board desires and our reserves, it will, it, we will be able to maintain the same level of landscaping under both, both alternatives that are being considered.
Okay. I guess my question was, though, maybe the council, in the motion, can we do the two years, or we just do this annually? I would make it my motion for the 30% this year, but.
Right. If that's the motion, then I think we would just need to adjust the, whatever resolution is in the board.
Okay. And with the understanding you read back to it before us next year with the 20, with the 25%? I mean, I would really make the motion if we could do the two years, but I don't know. I guess that's my question.
Yes.
Can we do two years coverage with one motion?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, I think the, the CFDs will come back to the board on an annual basis anyhow, so I think the, the board will, would have the expectation that next year would show 25%, but it will still be in front of you regardless.
But you'll be reevaluating it next year, so it could be 25 or could be different.
It will be 25. That's.
If that's the motion, it will be 25, even though you'll see it back here again.
Yeah. And here's Mr. Bettis.
I do have just one clarification, Colin Bettis, the debt officer. Each year we take a look at the, the need, and we also take a look at the amount of parcels that would be paying into it. So as additional development continues, there would be additional parcels that add to that revenue source. So we'll take another analysis and take a look at it again next year to make sure that the 25% would still be needed. So if.
Not greater than 25%.
At that point, we could reduce it, we would bring that back as well. But otherwise, yeah, you'd see it as a 25%, and we would be bringing it back on an annual basis.
Okay.
Okay. So your, your motion is for 30% at this time and reevaluate next year?
Well, and, and with the intent that we would be no greater than 25% adjustment in this next year, recognizing what Mr. Bettis and what Mr. Vacari have said, so.
I can support that, so I'll second it. And we need a roll call vote.
Supervisors, Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Serna?
Aye.
And that's a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Okay, now we are on to item 45, is the report on COVID-19 response. And I'm going to ask Metro Cable to pull up the PowerPoint for item number 45. It's the report on COVID-19 response.
We actually don't have a PowerPoint today. We're saving that for next week.
Okay, I'm sorry, my notes were incorrect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good morning, or almost good afternoon, Siobhan Katari, Director of the Department of Health Services. And I, I'm going to kick off our COVID report today. Would now be a good time?
Yes. Please proceed. Thank you.
Thanks. So I just wanted to, first of all, give some high-level highlights, and then I will turn it over to Dr. Casirio to give some more detailed information. Just to let you know, and I'm sure everyone's aware, that Sacramento County moved into the orange tier last week, so we were very excited about that. Not for what it symbolized, but really for what it meant behind the scenes, which was really our case rates came down quite a bit, which we'll talk about. Our vaccine rates went up, and also we were able to reach some of those communities in the harder-to-serve areas with vaccinations and ensure that they get access to care and access to vaccination. So we were very excited about all of the efforts that our team continues to do alongside our partners in the community. And we are looking forward to the June 15 date, which is coming up right next week. It does change a lot of things when we move beyond the blueprint, but there will also be some things that the state is indicating through Cal OSHA specifically, that we will need to continue in certain settings such as workplaces. We are monitoring that very closely because things are evolving by the day. And so as things evolve and change, and we will be back next week, we can share with you what that means for the community and what that means for our businesses. But we are going to continue our efforts to remain vigilant and to provide services to the community and ensure that we're out there with vaccines. And with that, I'm just going to turn it over to Dr. Casirio.
Good morning, supervisors and Madam Chair. So I'm, we did provide you with a written update, but. update, but just going to go over some of the most updated numbers, and then provide some additional information about June 15th and Cal OSHA. So according to the numbers for this morning, we have 107,030 cases of COVID-19 that have been reported to Sacramento County Public Health, and 1,716 deaths. Our average numbers daily has, has dropped, as Siobhan pointed out. We are now averaging about 50 to 60 cases reported per day, and that's over a week's average. And then, the case rate right now is at 3.7 per 100,000. So we're continuing to decline, and that's a good sign as we head towards June 15th. For vaccinations, we are at 1.3 million total doses that have been given. About 59.9% of our population that is eligible for vaccination has received at least one dose, and 49.1% have received, are fully vaccinated. And then, for the health equity quartile, the underserved communities, our vaccination rate has increased to 48%. So we're getting almost to that point of 50%, even for the quarter, the health equity quartile. So we continue to work with community-based agencies, with the state, and with our health system partners in continuing to have pop-up clinics. And I believe in the report that you received, we, we have provided a list of the clinics that are being run. And actually, that's not exhaustive, because some of the clinics are, we only get to know about afterwards. But there's a lot of work going on, and that will continue even beyond June 15th. And just to show in comparison to the state, at least 65.9% have received at least one dose, and 53.7% are fully vaccinated. So we're still below the state numbers, but we are progressing, and so we'll continue to work on that. And then, for June 15th, the information that we have right now is that most everyday places, such as shopping malls, movie theaters, and restaurants, will be open as normal, with no capacity limits or social distancing required. And of course, anyone can wear a mask anytime that they'd like, especially around children, or others who are vulnerable, or, or those that are not yet eligible for vaccination. Of note is that California will, all Californians will still continue to follow the state masking guidelines. And I believe that they will update them to align more with the CDC guidelines, so I don't know what that will look like right now. But from what we know is that in certain places, such as healthcare, such as jails and schools, masks will still be required. But we will, once we get to know those details, we will let you know. And also, we will be asked to continue following the state and CDC travel guidelines. And then lastly, Cal OSHA.
Excuse me, Dr. Casiri.
Sure.
I just want to make sure I heard that correctly. You said that theaters and events would be open with no social distancing restrictions and no masks?
Correct. No social distancing and no capacity limits. As for the masking, it will follow the CDC guidance, which right now states that for those who are fully vaccinated outdoors, they, actually, outdoors and indoors, they don't need to, to, to wear masks.
No mask, no, no capacity, which means.
No capacity.
Everything is opening up with no capacity limits, including restaurants and everyone.
That's correct. And so, all the sector guidelines that we have had will, will all be rescinded on June 15th, including the state health officer order and the county health officer order.
And that includes schools?
For schools, the social distancing guidelines will go away, but the masking guidelines will remain.
Why?
Okay, that doesn't, please, to the, to public, we're going to have public comment, and you'll have your opportunity. So, okay, I, that doesn't even make sense to me, because the children are the ones with the least, that are least impacted. But I don't even get, it's the older people that are more at risk, so it's upside, seems upside down. I mean, tell me if I'm off base.
There is an explanation for that.
Okay.
Children are also still susceptible to COVID-19. And studies right, actually now show that there are, there's an increase in number of adolescents that are ending up with very severe disease in the hospital. The other thing also is that a lot of children, especially those that are not yet eligible for vaccination, many of them still live in multi-generational households, and therefore, even though they might get mild disease, they can still carry it back to their own, you know, relatives that might be susceptible.
But we're opening it up completely for everyone older, the, for the general population, we're, we're totally opening it.
We're opening up the businesses, yes.
Okay, well, let's, let's just keep going. I'm not going to interrupt you anymore. Please, keep going.
Sure. And also, for mega, mega events, for indoor mega events, attendees will be required to confirm proof of vaccination or negative COVID-19 status to attend. And then, outdoor, I, you know, I'm having a hard time being able to continue with my presentation with the interruptions.
Can you, okay, can you please have respect for the speak, for the doctor? We, we will remove you if you can't respect the process, sir. We will, we'll have to. So we do have security here. Please, can you repeat the last thing you said, doctor? Because I didn't hear it. I'm sorry.
Sure. So for mega events, for indoor mega events, and those are, for indoors, 5,000 people plus, and for outdoors, 10,000 people plus. For mega events, attendees will be required to confirm proof of vaccination or negative COVID-19 status to attend. And outdoor mega event attendees will be strongly encouraged to do so.
Thank you.
And then lastly, for the Cal OSHA guidance, they, they are still in the process of updating their guidance, but from what we have right now, Cal OSHA proposes to continue the face covering requirement indoors and at mega events in mixed groups of vaccinated and unvaccinated workers. And it does so, and they list several reasons. I won't read all of them. But one says that there would be significant challenges for employers and Cal OSHA to meaningfully apply and enforce a face covering rule in mixed workplaces based upon individual vaccination status. So, and also, without the, this requirement, unvaccinated employees would be at risk, given the spread of more contagious variants. I want to point out again that all of this is state guidance. And as we've pointed out several times, that Sacramento County will follow the state guidance. We will not have anything stricter than the state guidance. And I think those are the main updates that we wanted to provide next week. Definitely, as we mentioned, we will provide PowerPoint presentation with a summary of the numbers, both the cases and vaccination efforts, and then also any additional information that we have on the state guidance.
Thank you, Dr. Casiri. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Dr. Casiri and, and Siobhan. Very much appreciate you and the, with the work you're doing under continued difficult circumstances. With respect to the, the Cal OSHA guidance and the guidance on school-aged children, is there a benchmark at the state level on when those might change that you've heard?
We're told that they're working on new guidance, but I don't have a timeline as to when that would occur. We've been told it might be as early as the fall, but right now, we've just been told to continue with the guidance that we have right now.
Okay. No, I'm curious if they've identified any, okay, if we reach certain benchmark in terms of, in terms of infection rates or something, you know, when we can even loosen those standards even more. So I'd appreciate that, maybe hearing back, hearing back from you about that, or maybe offline, someone can provide me that information.
I believe they will, but we don't have the data to know when that would happen.
Don't have it yet. Okay. And then, a couple of things I wanted, wanted to mention. Appreciate the list of the vaccine clinics. As you know, we've discussed before, my, my district is hit particularly hard by, I think, a lot of vaccine hesitancy and mistrust. And we had the, your curative was out there at the River City Food Bank at St. Matthew's Church over the weekend, and I went out there, and that, that's great. And my office is working on, with, with Department of Health, on a clinic up in North Highlands, like in a, in a park, maybe create some kind of event, more of a neighborhood event. And I think those are the kinds of things that, that we need to do to, and get community-based organizations involved, to get people to get vaccinated in a, in an atmosphere of trust, where it's being administered, and it's been, they're partnering with people that they know and trust in the community. And so, we'll keep doing that. And I just encourage you to, thank you, first of all, for your staff, for, for working with my staff, and encourage them to reach out to my office if any additional opportunities come up that we can help.
Sure.
Partner with you. And then finally, can you, can you talk a little bit about how, with respect to the unhoused population? And I know, you know, it's been a challenge during COVID because of the, the public health order, and that's, that has made it a little more difficult to address some challenges in terms of interfering with transportation or flood control infrastructure. And could you explain a little bit about how the June 15th date will maybe change that dynamic? You know, I don't know if you have any comments about that?
So for the unhoused, we have had three teams that have been going into the, both providing vaccine for, in the encampments, as well as for those that are in the homeless shelters. And these, these teams are collaboration between our public health staff, UC Davis, and Sutter. And what we've been told is that the number of people that are agreeing to get vaccinated is getting smaller and smaller. But we are continuing with our efforts, going out daily to be able to provide vaccination. During the time that the Johnson &amp; Johnson was not available, we started providing the Moderna. Of course, the disadvantage with the Moderna is having to go back for the second dose. But now that the Johnson &amp; Johnson is back on, those teams are providing the Johnson &amp; Johnson as well. We have about 1,700 doses that have been provided. That's about, represents about 20%. And so, it is lower than we would like to see it. But we do also understand that it's going to take multiple attempts to be able to provide the information and get many of these, the individuals to the point where they're ready to receive the vaccine. Many of them have said, I want to wait and see what happens to my friends. So I think we're just going to have to continue to do that. Come June 15th, what the discussions that we have had with, with the, the advocates, with our partners, is because in our health officer order, there is a section that relates to not breaking up encampments. And that goes, that language was taken directly from the CDC guidance. But since the health officer order is going to end come June 15th, that will go away as well. We've talked with county council, but from the discussions we've had, the public health order is not a good option for continuing dealing with the, the encampments. So I know that there's a team of us, including Siobhan and Bruce, that have been working with being able to have alternate places where people would be able to go if those encampments need to be moved. And I'll move outside and let Siobhan or Bruce say something.
No, I was just going to add, the same is that in the budget hearings over the next couple of days, and in the governors may revise in the legislative proposal, there are dollars that would address encampments, and would address our ability to get out and provide vaccinations and services. And so, you will see some requests going forward, because we do intend to amplify our efforts in that space.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that. And it's not, it's, you know, it's not only dollars, but it's the approach that the county takes. And I've been very, you know, my, my hat's really off to you, Siobhan, Dr. Kay, Bruce, and, and our interim county exec, for getting all the stakeholders of the county together to work through some of these challenges that we faced during the public health order. But I also want to, you know, I was talking to a group this morning, and the issue came up about, okay, the public health order and, and homeless encampments that are really interfering with businesses, or interfering with flood control infrastructure, or, or, or transportation infrastructure. And even despite the public health order, we've been able to mitigate some of these things, and ultimately, some folks have had to be moved. But, but something this, this group that I spoke to today didn't, didn't understand, and maybe didn't know about, was that before the county ever forces anybody to leave, we have a very robust outreach by DHA, DHS, and other partners to get them into some kind of housing, shelter, housing, residential program for substance abuse or, or mental illness. And I just, I want to state that very, very clearly and unequivocally here. And I told this group, I said, you know, I would not have it any other way. I would insist on it, that a law enforcement option is always the last option when it comes to dealing with an encampment that may be a problem. So just want to take this opportunity to put that out there. And I don't know, Bruce, if you had anything else to add, or, or anything?
Sorry, couldn't tell if the light was on. In our discussions tomorrow, at the budget hearings, we're going to be presenting a proposal to the board related to overall effort on homelessness, but in particular, with respect to the encampments, expanded outreach, expanded navigation, potential new capacity for where we can put people. So we'll be talking with the board at length tomorrow about what that proposal is.
Great. And each of those efforts come with an opportunity to get more vaccinations as well, right? So, okay. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you Supervisor Desmond. Yes, just one second. I, I just wanted to, on the, Dr. Casiri, you said there were some challenges with the businesses with Cal OSHA. Could you expand on that, what those challenges are?
I think that the big challenge is that the Cal OSHA guidelines that are coming out, or the regulations that are coming out pertaining to masking are stricter than the CDC or what CDPH is proposing to put out. So we've had a lot of the businesses calling and asking how they're going to implement and what exactly they need to do. So since the, the regs have not been adopted yet, we have provided them what we know right now. And hopefully soon, we will know what, what the businesses need to do, and especially for places where they have to interact with large numbers of people from the public.
It, it's also my understanding that, and I don't know if this is true, but the, I read an article about the vaccine, that if an employer requires the vaccine in order to come back to work, they could be liable for any adverse reactions to the vaccine. Have you heard anything about that?
No, I'm not aware of that.
So, I mean, that's not a requirement, that we can't require that someone take the vaccine. That's a personal decision.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any employer that is requiring, at least in Sacramento County. There are some employers that have been asking about how they can verify vaccination, because I think if you're able to verify that everyone, for example, in an office is vaccinated, that you can actually remove the masks. But I think there are a lot of challenges there. So that is why Cal OSHA is actually leaning towards just leaving the masking mandate in place. But I don't know where that's going to end just yet.
But I thought if they had the vaccine, they could, some people are getting COVID after getting the vaccine, and some, and I thought they could still get COVID after having the vaccine, and they could still spread it. Is that?
A couple of things. With any vaccine, it's not 100% protection. That is why it's, up until now, it's still been important for us to continue the preventive measures of masking and. measures of masking and social distancing. But of course, the higher the percentage of people that are vaccinated, the more protection that the entire community has, because there's basically fewer people who are susceptible, and fewer people that can spread. I think there've been some studies that have been done about whether someone who is vaccinated, because we know that they have protection, and with Moderna and Pfizer, it's like 95% protection. But, and there've been some studies to find out if they can still pass it on. My understanding from the initial studies is that it's unlikely for those that are vaccinated. So actually, right now, especially with the level of vaccination that we have, the risk is higher for those that are unvaccinated in terms of getting COVID, and also getting severe disease, or getting, having to be hospitalized. So, and when you look at the language that Cal OSHA put in place, the reason that they're putting those in place is especially for those that either, for example, if they have not been vaccinated, or for those that even after vaccination, they might not get the full impact because of maybe a disease that compromises their immune system. And especially again, for work settings where there's, could be a large number of mixing between those that are vaccinated and unvaccinated.
Thank you, Dr. Casiri. I heard, I believe I heard Supervisor Kennedy on the phone, is that correct?
Supervisor Serna.
Oh, Supervisor Serna, please, you have the floor.
Thank you. I wanted to dovetail off of what Supervisor Desmond was asking in his, his line of inquiry about the, about the camps, because I think it's really important. One of the things that was not mentioned, which I'll leave it to our county council to confirm, which still very much applies, is my understanding, is the Boise case. So regardless of what, whatever guidance may be applicable at any point in time as we come out of the pandemic, my, my understanding is that we still have the challenge of making sure that people are not left without a geographical option as much as a service option. In other words, that they have the ability to go somewhere, whether that is, you know, a triage shelter, or some other kind of facility or space. But we cannot just arbitrarily go and move people without having at least some capacity to relocate them with some specificity. And so I would, I would ask county council to maybe opine briefly on that, if she would, please.
Sure, yes. We are still working within the confines of the Martin versus Boise decision, so any management of encampments after June 15th, and prior to June 15th, obviously, will be within those confines. I think the county is doing an excellent job, as Dr. Casiri pointed out, of making sure that the unhoused people living in these encampments are being offered services of all different natures, including housing, among others. And that will continue again after June 15th.
Great, thank you. I just think it's important to note that, because I, like others on the board, have been receiving phone calls and emails and other expressions of concern about the prospect of, you know, on June 16th, is there going to be a mass effort underway by the county to go move encampments? And I just want to assure those that have expressed that concern, that that's not the intent. The intent is to continue to make sure that people are kept as healthy as possible, as the, you know, the pandemic doesn't, just doesn't end on the 16th, on the 15th. We still have a ways to go. But again, regardless of that, we still need to abide by and respect the fact that there is that court decision that governs what we can and cannot do relative to the relocation of encampments based on capacity to, to house them. So, thank you.
We're, we're looking forward with the P-bids to any kind of help we, they can get with the, as we've always, so I'm right in there with the encampments, and then hopefully we can get back to what was still what we considered a challenge with the Ninth Circuit Court decision, but even harder with the COVID restrictions. I wanted to ask Supervisor Kennedy if you have any questions or comments.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, I wanted to just ask the county executive a question. During the briefing we had, you had kind of looked for direction when it comes to how do we continue to communicate this information in these reports at board meetings? Are you still looking for that information?
Not necessarily today. I just wanted to plant the seed so that we could think about that after the break.
Okay, thank you very much. I will, though, weigh in on one specific subject in relation to that. And that's that I would like to continue to, or start, you know, once, once the emergency relief funds, you know, come in, I would, I'd like to err on the side of too much information. Judging from what we've seen in the past, I think it would be helpful for the board to stay on top of where that money is coming from, where it's going to, how it's being spent, et cetera. And so I would, I would err on the side of too much information when it comes to the emergency relief bailout fund.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. I have one more question, and it relates to some of our earlier public comment regarding the declaration of emergency. And I think my question is to county council. I know that there are some counties who actually left their state of emergency a long time ago, and in their, in their post comments after leaving the state of emergency, they said they would defer to the state, I think, I believe. Can you please tell us what would be, how can, because it, it doesn't seem like we're, our hospitals are overflowing, and our numbers are going down, and we don't seem in a, what we have traditionally called a state of emergency, it doesn't seem like we're in that. So I would like to have that conversation about leaving the state of emergency. And can you please explain to us how that would impact Sacramento County if we left? What are the pros and cons, and how can we do that?
Sure. I haven't researched your specific question, so I'm going to answer in generalities, and I'm happy to come back.
I don't want to put you on the spot.
Yeah, that's fine, that's okay. I can come back next week to give you a bit more details, and I haven't had a chance to talk with the county exec or the emergency management office about their plans. But in general, the state of local emergency allows us to get funding from the state, from FEMA and other entities. And for that reason, I believe it's the intent to continue that declaration of local emergency until such time as those funds, access to those funds are no longer needed. Again, I will defer to the county exec on that specific question.
So just, I don't want to, I just, on that, I want to then have information regarding Placer County and the other counties who left the state of emergency. Does that mean they're not getting funding? That, that will be a question, that'll be a follow-up question.
Certainly. So there's two emergencies. There's the local health emergency, and there's the declaration of local emergency. So those are two different things that we did back, I think in February of 2020. And so those two will be looked at, and make, the staff will make a determination on whether or not both of those need to continue, whether or not one of them should, or one of them shouldn't. And I'm not sure when staff was planning on bringing that back, but I'm certain that that has been discussed. I just am not privy to that information right now. But again, to answer your question, there are legal implications to the reasons why we would want to continue, one or both.
I'd like to know, yeah, I'd like to move in that direction, and I would like to know the pros and cons, so I appreciate your follow-up on that as soon as possible. Supervisor Natoli.
Just a related question, but I understood Dr. Casiri was saying that the emergency health order, as of next Tuesday, would not be issuing a subsequent order. Is that, did I understand you correctly, Dr. Casiri, or misunderstand you?
That's correct, but the health officer order is separate from the declaration of health.
And I understand the distinction, what Lisa was saying, but, but, so that answers part of what you, have I heard you, at least you were summarizing both of those two as being distinct.
Well, there's actually three.
There's three then?
Right, so there's the declaration of local emergency, declaration of local health emergency, which were issued back in February. And then there's the public health officer orders that have been issued since around March 18th, I believe, of 2020. And from what Dr. Casiri has just said, that will cease to exist, that last one, will cease to exist on June 15th. And that is the order that has basically defined what can and cannot be done for the last 15 months. The other two are more, I think, administrative at this point. Just, that's my, the distinction between the two, I would say.
But the governor, oh, I'm sorry.
I just, I want to say that it would be helpful, we heard testimony about two assembly bills this morning, and again, I think to have some background on, you know, what, what's, you know, at least from the interpretation council, what's contained in those two bills, and it may be that Siobhan and Dr. Casiri want to weigh in on, not today, I just, but I think in light of the question being raised, I think it's important, is information for this board, as we consider whatever subsequent actions may come before us, and/or direction would come out of any future conversations. So I don't think it needs to be elaborate, but I would, I think having some understanding and certainly in light of what was offered as testimony here today, so, thanks.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate that. Thanks Supervisor Natoli. The governor issued a letter that stated that he was not going to end the state of emergency at the state level. So is that the declarate, which, that, that's just outside everything we do? And so if he doesn't end it, we're still, we're still under a state of emergency, because we're a branch of, we're basically?
A subdivision of the state, yes. And the inhabitants of Sacramento County would be subject to that order as well.
Thank you. At this time, county executive has a comment.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a brief comment about the state of emergency order. As Ms. Travis said, that is administrative, and it doesn't have any criteria in that order about behaviors that are acceptable or unacceptable, as, as does relate to a public health order.
Which one are you talking about?
The state of emergency. So for example, if you go back to the winter windstorm, that state of emergency order was kept in place until we had identified all of the funding that we might need from FEMA. So I just want to be clear that if we keep the state of emergency order in place, it would primarily be for the purpose of ensuring that we received eligible FEMA money coming our way, but it does not impose any restrictions on behaviors for the community.
So the one that imposes the behavioral restrictions is the local health emergency?
The public health order.
The local public health order, which is expiring, or will be rescinded, I would guess, on June 16th.
But you said there were three, a local health emergency, a declaration of local emergency, there's the public health orders, and there's the state declaration of emergency. I'm sorry.
Right, so the public, the declaration of public health emergency allows the, which is, will, will still be in effect after June 15th, allows the county public health officer to make necessary orders. Even without that, she could still do that, but that was the reason why we adopted, or issued that back in February of 2020. And my understanding is those two, the two emergency orders will be, remain in effect, while the public health order, which restricts, or tells what people can do or can't do, will be going away on June 15th.
And our, Dr. Casiri, you have stated that you're following the state, so you're not going to do something more onerous than this, you're basically following the state's lead, is my understanding.
That's correct. We are going to be following the state guidance, so we will not have anything more restrictive.
I appreciate the follow-up on it, though, so that we can explore our, articulate, explore and then articulate our options. Okay, thank you. Any other comments from those on the phone? Hearing none. We do have public comment on this item. Were you, were you done, doctor? Okay, thank you so much. We do have some public comments in chambers, and so we will, again, start by lining up three at a time. I'll call Desiree McGuire, Merle Meadows, Tracy Cumming.
Madam Chair, my suggestion, we have one other item, it was a 945 item, might we hold that over till this afternoon? Would that be, we've got a closed session, I don't know how long, but it would seem it might be practical to hold item 46 to?
So we have, we're going to move a couple of the closed session items to a later date. There is one item we must hear today. We have to start the redistricting hearing at 2:00 PM. We can't start that later, it has to start right at 2:00. So if we moved something?
Maybe the other ones won't be as fast.
Well, we could move an item to the afternoon, but it would have to be after the redistricting.
I don't know if you have call-ins on item 46, it's been on hold for a long time. I just, I know I have substantial information I'd like to weigh into, and I don't want to, you know, encumber what we're currently in.
Okay, I'm, you're so thoughtful.
Well, I don't know about that, but. There are no callers for item 46. The only callers we have is just for this item.
Okay.
Okay.
So we could put item 46 over till after the redistricting hearing?
I'm going to defer to the county executive.
Do you want to see how it goes? Because it's only 12:15, we could, well, we have one more hour.
I'm just fully warning you, I have any number of questions, and I've got some reference to documents that will be taken up later this week.
Oh, got it, okay.
So I just wanted to give you a.
Can we hold over item 46 to after the 2 o'clock item?
Also, may I just interrupt to let you know that there are folks who are, who have been waiting in Skype, that are part of the group, to talk, talk about that item as well. I just wanted to point that out, that there's.
Item 46?
I believe so, yeah.
So maybe we can ask them to come back, what would be the estimated time if we had them come after the redistricting workshop?
It really depends on the number of public commenters we have regarding the redistricting. I'm waiting to see if someone texts me to tell me how long.
And I'm fine going ahead, I just wanted to indicate that I didn't just have, just a couple of questions, so.
Well, we are going to have to make some adjustments in order to start redistricting at 2:00 PM.
Well, we could put the board water agency item after redistricting. I, I don't know how you feel about that, Supervisor Natoli, that would?
The water agency, you're talking about the bonding?
Item 47, well, we have people waiting on Skype probably for that as well.
I don't anticipate that would be long, I did a couple of comments, but, so I don't anticipate 47 as being very long, as well as with staff presentation, but.
Let me find out who's waiting on 46, and to see if we can actually move that to the afternoon.
Okay, and for now, we'll proceed with public comment, and you can just chime in when you need to.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, Desiree, please proceed. You have two minutes.
Yes, hello again. Thank you guys for your time. I would like to reference that the CDC and following their guidelines has been thrown a lot around this room. I would like to let you guys know that back in September 2020, then CDC Director Dr. Robert Redfield made this statement, "This mask is more guaranteed to protect me against COVID than when I take the COVID vaccine." The statement, paired with more than 10,000 international medical experts and 1,000 attorneys joining a class action lawsuit against the World Health Organization, Centers for Disease Control, and other health agencies for crimes against humanity should be cause for alarm. This shot they are pushing as a cure, supported only by incorrect testing and fraudulent death certificates, violates Article 32 of the 1949 Geneva Convention. Can this even be considered a vaccine if it does not qualify as one? The five Geneva Convention standards are as follows. One, it must provide immunity to the virus. This is a leaky gene therapy that does not provide immunity to COVID, and claims that they reduce the symptoms, but double vaccinated are now 60% of the patients who need the ER or ICU with COVID infections. Yes, shake your head. Two, it must protect the recipients from receiving. Two, it must protect the recipients from rece, from getting the virus. This gene therapy does not provide immunity, and those with the double vaccine can still catch and spread the virus. It's been proven. Three, it must reduce deaths due to viral infection. This gene therapy does not reduce deaths from the infection. Double vaccinated people infected with COVID have also died. Four, it must reduce the circulation of the virus. This gene therapy still allows-
You have 15 seconds.
-the virus to spread because it gives zero immunity to the virus. It also must reduce the transmission of the virus. Again, to repeat, it does not. I would also like to say, not only is this shot not effective, it is dangerous. A government-supported website called VAERS, the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, states in the 25 years between 1995 and 2020, there were 2,677 reported deaths caused by all vaccines combined. Now, in just the last five months, there have been-
Can you please wrap up?
-4,265 deaths.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I have a note from our county, Acting County Executive, that we can move 46 to after redistricting, so that, that will be our intention. And I just want to remind everyone, you know, we, we want to try to be respectful. Express your opinions. It's okay to have some emotion, but don't, don't degrade others, or, and try, try to be respectful. Exercise our rights responsibly and professionally is, is what I'm asking. So now we have Merrill Meadows.
Yes, that's correct. So I'm going to go kind of a little off-topic of what was going on in response to the ladies that were up here. Just because some studies that have been shown of 85% of people who have caught COVID-19 were actually adamant mask wearers. And that has actually been reported on the CDC websites. Also, with the June 15th, no more restrictions for masks or social distancing, except for schools does not make any sense at all. It has not only mentally affected our children, but also emotionally affected them. And I can go by that off of experience for myself and my own children. Sorry. I believe it's infringing on our rights, and I don't think that it is something that is selfish on our part, is by our own experience that we have had. And so we shouldn't be pushed in that way. I feel that if you feel safe, Mr. Patrick Kennedy, that of wearing a mask keeps you safe, then please, but don't push that upon us that have had the experience of negative effects from them. And I fear of the vaccine, too. How can they require a vaccine that in its clinical trial even be pushed or mandatory, even if we are following the science and it's not FDA-approved, or even being pushed to be approved even faster than beyond the science in the past? It is not 100% accurate, as quoted by these ladies. So why should we be able to have, why should we have to take it? Especially if we're taking care of ourselves, and I believe in my immunity and the health of, for myself. There have been too many inconsistencies, and I do not believe that asymptomatic applies for COVID-19. Thank you.
Tracy Cummings?
No.
Cummings, okay. Our next three people are Marilyn Terro, I said it wrong, I think, Richard Ropiat, and Brenda Pandos. You can start lining up. Please proceed.
Last night, I saw a video on safety vaccinations interviewing Dr. Peter McCullough, who is a doctor of internal medicine and a board-certified cardiologist. And I just want to bring that up, because some of the things I'm going to say is from him, and I want to give him credit. He asked, he starts off saying, who are the stakeholders? Pharmaceutical companies, CDC, FDA, NIH, White House, the WHO, Gates Foundation? Why are these stakeholders, want every single person in this country and this planet to get the vaccine? COVID-recovered people cannot get COVID. Why do they need to get vaccinated? Why do our children need to get vaccinated when the recovery rate is 99.99%? The vaccine has risks. Why are we not being told the safety issues by our senators, our House of Representatives, our president, the media? This makes me very suspicious. Why are we not getting weekly updates to date? According to VAERS website, over 4,000 deaths in the U.S. from the, from the vaccine. In Europe, in the first three days of the vaccine, 10,000 people died. Why are our jobs, education livelihoods based on a decision that could potentially be fatal? I love to run. I love concerts. Two things I haven't been able to do for 15 months, and now Governor Newsom is telling me that if I don't get vaccinated, I can't go to a concert, I can't run in a race. I'm scared to death to get this vaccine, just like many of you are afraid to get dying of COVID. I'm afraid of dying from this vaccine, or getting blood clots or being paralyzed. I am afraid to death, and we don't even know what the long-term effects are. I won't even go down that rabbit hole. The US FDA regulatory guidance on vaccines say that all vaccines need two years-
You have 15 seconds.
-to be tested for safety. This vaccine has only had two months. I'm 52, I'm healthy. I get my vitamin D, I go outside and get the sun, I exercise. My grandpa lived to be 109. My body, God created my body to have natural immunity, and I do not want to take this vaccine, because it has been shown-
Can you please wrap up?
-that it is going to overpower my natural immunity and could cause me to die from other viruses. Thank you.
Marilyn Truex, followed by Richard Ropiat, followed by Brenda Pandos.
Good afternoon. I am here to ask you, one, to open all public buildings to 100%. According to our current numbers, we do not, we do not need to have these buildings closed. People should be able to come and address you in person. I'd also like to ask you to reject vaccine passports and start advocating for our children. These masks are causing staph infections, lung issues, and seeing the children out on the playgrounds during PE, this is ridiculous. Asymptomatic carriers do not exist. We have a 99.82% recovery rate and a less than 1% death rate. A study out of China says that 34,000 people were tested for reinfection at a point, 0.3% rate they were reinfected. What we need to establish is herd immunity, natural herd immunity. Lockdowns are likened to house arrest. They are decreasing circulation for people because we're stuck in our homes all the time. And we've also seen an increase in drug and physical abuse. Not only that, but you're asking us to choose between our children's mental and physical health when sending, sending them to these public schools that we pay for. The vaccine, 2003, since 2003, we have been trying to develop a vaccine for SARS. Antibodies are not a marker of, of being, able to be infected from the virus. In fact, antibodies are a marker of contamination. Animals subjected, and mammals specifically, subjected to high antibody response and coronavirus reinfection caused all-
You have 10 seconds.
All mammals to die. So I highly encourage you to look into this a little bit further and open us up to 100%, please.
Mr. Ropiat.
Hi, sorry about my outburst. I get really excited about this issue because I see this everywhere I go. People are really, really upset. They're upset because we're giving authority to an unlected person to dictate to you what to do, to dictate to us that we're under tyranny. Bull. Sorry, I'm upset. Okay, first and foremost, in this whole period of time, okay, they have not isolated, outside of a lab, this so-called COVID-19. In this whole period of time, not one person has died. Have they been able to take the virus out of that person and show us that they died from that virus? It's all speculation. It's all speculation for an agenda. Look at the numbers. Use your minds. Last year and this year, the same number of people died, but this year, everyone died of COVID and not the flu. My mother got in 2018, the flu B virus, or vaccine. She got it. Five days later, she's in an ICU for five days, fighting for her life because of flu B, and she got the virus, the vaccine that gave it to her. I had to be there with her for five days in the ICU, every day, all day long, to make sure they didn't intubate her and murder her. I've lived through this. I've seen what this medical system with cracked-out doctors are doing to kill our seniors. Villagers are a death trap. I've seen it. I saved my mom's life by fighting these doctors and not letting them put her on one. Open your eyes. These people speak the truth. We're experiencing this. Doctors have no business making rules that affect our liberty and our freedom and dignity and sienna. Oh, I ate too much pizza last night. Listen, you want to wear your mask, fine, but if you're going to act like you've got to be-
You have 15 seconds.
You come back here, and you get and sit in those tents like you're doing to our schoolchildren. You sit in those tents and be safe, just like you force on our poor kids. Enough!
Brenda Pandos, followed by Gabrielle Ingram, and that's the last card I have.
I have 45 minutes.
What's your name?
Tiffany Noyah.
I don't have it.
Did she put it on her, her other slip when she spoke earlier?
Oh, 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 yeah, okay. Hi, Brenda.
Hi. So I looked up the numbers that are on Dr. Casiri's site and trying to figure out the whole thing, how it, how it came out. And actually, the numbers that are reported on the Sacramento County Public Health Epidemiology do not match what's on the California Health and Human Services portal. And so there, on the positive test cases are 200 cases more than what's on the, the Health and Human Services, and the deaths are 66 more than what's on the- And this is, this is a chart of what it looks like. What we're talking about that's causing the pandemics, it's not the cases, it's the deaths. And the issue, too, is, is that it's, it says on there that it's probable deaths, not that they got tested, it's, it's assumed. And the problem with that is that they were incentivized to put on the death certificate, or, or the hospitals were incentivized, 39,000 if it was COVID-related. So that's, that's completely screwing up the death numbers, because they're, they don't even have to test for it. They can just say they died from COVID, when it's usually not the case. Also, too, the vaccine is not safe. We've heard all the people talking, I looked up VAERS, too. There were also in that number of people that died, 11 of them were children, children. You know, the swine flu, when it came out, it, it, 30 people died and they pulled the vaccine. We've had over 4,000 people dying from the, from the, from this coronavirus vaccine, if it can be called that. It's, it's, first of all, it's not FDA-approved, but they broke two laws to get the UEA agreement, which is saying that there's nothing to cure the disease out there, and for a disease that's 99.9% curable, it's supposed to be if it's like decimating, but that isn't the truth. The truth is, is there's only been 30, 61,000 deaths in California. That's .15% of people that died, and we have been locked down. It's ridiculous. Also, too, in the United States, there's only been four cases that are from children, four, I mean, 4%, and 350 deaths out of 73 million children. It's not affecting children. Children aren't the ones that are getting it. Also, too, I want to bring to your attention CalGina. CalGina prohibits using genetic info for basis for employment, housing, education, mortgage lending, electronics. That is what is going to protect people who are employees from their employers, who are trying to coerce them to get a vaccine, a gene therapy that isn't, that is not FDA-approved. So that's, and this is the numbers, and then this is the other, the other county's numbers that I got, too. This is actually globally.
You have five seconds.
And this is California. So.
Thank you.
Hello, Board. I wanted to start with Supervisor Kennedy, who stated that it's disconcerting that people aren't in masks. I disagree, though I respect your opinion. May I remind you that the same mandate you referenced cites exemptions for medical conditions? I know just three of the people here personally, and even I don't ask or assume their medical status. It's none of my business. I am not their doctor. My concern with your comment is that it makes, to make such a statement, you are socially shaming people for whom you are generalizing by cite and assuming they are flagrantly violating, as you put it, rather than protecting their health. All that comment did was reveal your personal biases and fears. Additionally, what law is it that you are citing? I would love to know the penal code, so I can look it up. I emailed your office from chambers to follow up on that. Let's talk about codes, though. Sacramento Code Section 2.46.130 has review requirements under Government Code Section 8630 that states "The governing body shall proclaim the termination of the local emergency at the earliest possible date the conditions warrant." Government Code 8558 lists the definition of local emergency, which we, the people, know we are not under. I publicly request, and have formally requested in writing, that Resolutions Number 2020-0159 and 2020-0160 be brought up as agenda items for a vote to rescind/terminate the Local Public Health Emergency and Local Emergency Proclamations. Counselor Travis, they were signed on March 10th. It is time to defund public health in regards to COVID-19, per government code, as there is no local emergency. The items Public Health is walking back June 15th, per Dr. Casiri today, are not the same. As an adage, there are employers requiring shots for their employees after July. I have heard of UC Davis, whether the VMTH, or hospitals, teachers, some hospitals, and friends are receiving notices. FYI, it's, employers are doing it. Thank you. And it's nice to be here.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Noyah. I'm a resident of Sacramento County, and I'm also a former employee of Twin Rivers Unified School District. I was employed from November 2020 through April 2021, when, after I filed a discrimination complaint, I was retaliated against, and I was discharged from my position. The Department of Fair Employment and Housing is taking care of that. Actually, Health and Human Services is going to be investigating that for me. But I'm coming here as an insider, as someone who's worked in the schools and seeing what they're doing to the children. I, I was a special education paraeducator. We started off distance learning, and the, all the students were failing. The distance learning was not serving them. They were not showing up to their classes. And then when we moved to doing the hybrid learning, some of the students didn't, did not come back. They decided to stay in distance learning. When I asked one student why she decided to stay in distance learning despite failing all of her classes and never showing up to any of her classes, she said that she was too afraid to go to school because she hadn't received the vaccine yet. There was another student who was freshly out of juvenile hall, and with that, you know- And with that, you know, comes certain defiant behaviors. And so, of course, in our classroom, he would usually have his mask down. The directors from our district and our principal were to send students like him to the office to be placed back into distance learning. The student had all Fs. He never attended any of his classes during distance learning. Going back to hybrid, he actually showed up to school and they...
You have 15 seconds.
They expect students like him to go back to distance learning, and that does not serve students at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we do have, I believe, three callers on the line.
Go ahead and please send the first caller.
Hi, caller, you have two minutes. Please start with your comments.
Hello?
Yes, caller, you're in the meeting. You have two minutes to, for your public comments.
What Dr. Kusari recommends makes absolutely no sense. It doesn't matter that she's following the state guidelines. Her recommendations are discriminatory and unconstitutional. And as such, I suggest that you reconsider her replacement. Why do we need any masks, mandatory shots, or mandatory testing? Consider the following. We have the right to engage in activities that increase our mortality rate. I can drink alcohol, smoke marijuana, not exercise, eat poorly, smoke or chew tobacco, and choose not to get a flu shot. All of these things increase my mortality rate. Yet I can't choose to not wear a mask or take an experimental shot for a virus where the CDC says I have a 99.85% chance of survival? Or that my daughter has to do the same to attend public school, where she has a 99.997% chance of survival? And these death rate numbers include the presumed cases. The masks and COVID shots are actually hurting people, as others have mentioned. The experimental COVID shots must be stopped immediately. Theirs has now reported over 4,000 deaths, yet there is a consistent push to inject them. The swine flu was pulled off the market for approximately 50 shots, or 50 deaths. The COVID shots have now killed more than all vaccines over the last 10 years combined. It is a crime against humanity to allow the continued administration of these experimental shots. The shots are unnecessary due to effective therapeutics and an extremely high survival rate that includes presumed deaths. And now 12-year-olds can decide for themselves whether they want to take this experimental injection without the need for parental consent. This is disgraceful and shameful. There are only two reasons to continue these COVID restriction shots, testing, and emergency orders. Money and power to control the people. Continued COVID guidelines under the guise of lawful mandates are unconstitutional, discriminatory, and criminal. As such, they should be terminated immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please send in the next caller. Hi, caller, you have two minutes. Please start with your comments.
Hi, I am a resident of Sacramento County. The public health and local emergency declarations must be terminated immediately. What started as two weeks to slow the spread has turned into 62 weeks of governmental overreach. The survivability rate is close to 100%, and there are proven affordable, effective therapeutics available on the market. Businesses and schools must fully open. And all COVID-related requirements must be discontinued, such as the requirement for masks, social distancing, COVID testing, and COVID shots. In addition, the experimental shots must never be required, and people who exercise their free right to choose not to get the shots must not be discriminated against. It is criminal for public schools and businesses to push the shots on their students and employees. We believe there is a planned attempt to force residents to get the shots through recently passed AB 262, AB 389, and CMS 911-5-F. These bills place CPS in every school and allow the Department of Health and Human Services to remove people from a home if they are deemed a health threat, such as due to not taking the experimental COVID shots. An article published by the Children's Health Defense this week describes how researchers have discovered that the spike protein in the COVID shots travel through the bloodstream and build up in various organs, such as the liver and ovaries, causing organ damage, and even crosses the blood-brain barrier, causing brain damage. I really hope these discoveries are not true or overblown. But even if there is a remote possibility that this is true, do you want to have blood on your hands because you helped force the shots? Do you want your children or grandchildren, who haven't yet taken them, to be forced to do so after they become approved? Especially since children have nearly a 100% survivability rate? We ask that schools and businesses open up with no COVID requirements, and we demand that the recently passed bill is not being forced. People should not be forced to wear masks, take COVID tests, and especially not be forced to take an experimental COVID shot. Thank you.
Can you please rep? Thank you.
Please send in the next caller. Oh, I just got notification that there is no more callers.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our public comment. I want to thank our public health for the update. Much appreciated. And we'll move on to the next item, please.
Okay, so just so that I understand, Item 46 is going to get moved to after the redistricting item, and so we're on to Item 47. You're acting as the Board of Supervisors in Sacramento County Water Agency. This is the County of Sacramento Community Facilities District Number 2014-2, prescribing the conditions, terms, and form of not to exceed $5 million aggregate, principal of County of Sacramento Community Facilities District Number 2014-2, the North Vineyard Station Number 2, special tax bond Series 2021, and approving the form of and authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement, an official statement, a continuing disclosure certificate, and an amendment to an acquisition agreement, and two maintenance and indemnity agreements, and approve an appropriation adjustment request in the amount of $4 million.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Supervisors. I'm Colin Bettis, the County Debt Officer. There are three recommended actions for the Board of Supervisors that are all related to the approval of the second and final new money issuance of bonds for North Vineyard Station, CFD Number 2, Improvement Area Number 2. In addition, there is one action that is recommended for the Board of Directors of the Sacramento County Water Agency regarding to access to water pipelines that were constructed by Lennar and are in the Central California Tracton Company's right-of-way. In 2013, 2014, and 2015, Lennar entered into various pipeline agreements with Central California Tracton Company for the access to water pipelines and drainage pipelines that crossed under the railroad tracks. These agreements should have been in the name of the Sacramento County Water Agency and the county via Department of Water Resources, respectively. Staff is recommending entering into the two maintenance and indemnity agreements in order to indemnify the agency and the county for any required future maintenance. Bond proceeds from the issuance will be used to reimburse Lennar Homes of California, the developer, for completed public infrastructure facilities costs. Debt service on the bonds is payable from special tax assessments of the property owners in the district and are not a general fund obligation of the county. The request is for the issuance of an amount not to exceed $5 million, but will likely be closer to 4.3 million. County is authorized, so far, the county is authorized to issue up to $50 million in North Vineyard Station, CFD Number 2, and has issued $14.2 million in 2016, leaving an additional authority for additional $35.7 million. The district is located within the North Vineyard Station's specific plan area, and the bond issuance will finance the required public facilities for the construction of a total of 567 residential home units at full build-out. These bonds will be fixed-rate bonds with a final maturity date of September 1, 2046. The annual special tax for a single-family home is estimated to be approximately $1,700 to $1,900. The district has a composite value of $199 million and exceeds the CFD value-to-lean policy of 3 to 1. The total allocated debt burden for the district is estimated to be $19.4 million for a value-to-lean ratio of 10.27 to 1. As is common for Community Facilities District debt, this will not be a rated deal. On April 29, 2021, the County Debt Utilization Committee met and unanimously approved moving forward to the board with a recommendation to issue the Series 2021 North Vineyard Station, CFD Number 2 bonds. Along with the ongoing debt that remains outstanding, the developer will be required to renew the letter of credit on the regular annual schedule, which will equal the amount of annual special tax levied on the undeveloped land in the next fiscal year. We have on the line available for any questions Brandon Diaz from Oric Bond Council, Vince Lizalde of Stiefel, the underwriter, Nick Jones of PFM, the county's financial advisor, and Jack Seavy of Lennar, the developer. And that concludes my presentation on this item.
Thank you, Colin. Supervisor Natoli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just from the get-go, I don't have problems with the bond request here as before us, but I have two related items. And one, first, I want to get some clarification around, it's on page 2 of the staff report. And to be clear, as relates to the background, because with this action, we're also excluding permit conditions on 57 lots that related to a trigger that would require the Waterman Road Crossing, which now currently stops short of the, it's not an abandoned track. That needs to be clear for the staff. It's, that right-of-way has been taken out of use, but it's not been abandoned. There's a distinction, and I believe a legal distinction on that. Recognizing that that has served, though, as a bit of a wall to climb, my term, to get that constructed, it is becoming an increasing issue with folks out there because we have a wide road. Waterman Road is a four-lane, major thoroughfare through the community, and it stops short. And so we have not connected the east-west, and I don't know what's being contemplated. I talked to Mr. Bakari yesterday about this. And I know that when we reduced fees in the North Vineyard area some months ago, that this improvement, which was initially cited as being a grade crossing, has not been permitted by the Public Utilities Commission, and so therefore, we have not been able to go forward. And it was contemplated a much lower amount than if you grade separated, if you went over or under. I'm concerned about this from the standpoint of this community. This improvement is contemplated. It's necessary, I believe. The EIRs have reviewed, showed circulation that used Waterman Road as a backbone connector in that community. And so, again, I'm not looking to hold up anything just before us today as relates to that particular improvement, but I think this board is due a report on the status of that. Community I represent in District 5, but I know there's growing frustration with the illegal dumping that's occurring at that improved right-of-way, that dead ends on either side of the tracks. And so that needs to be something that we need to, want to be aware of. But secondly, I think it would be wise to have an update in light of the time. It may be that we're not going to have that today, but I asked Mr. Bakari to come back at a date, or today if you'd like to, Ron, to just give us the status of that, because I know we received correspondence subsequent to my conversation with you yesterday, and there continues to be growing frustration in that development about the lack of that connection. And I don't see, very frankly, anything in the immediate future that's going to get us across those tracks, and it's going to continue. I think it's going to be a public safety concern at some point in time, because the circuitous routes to get to some of those neighborhoods are going to require going out to Florin, to Gerber, Elk Grove, Florin, or Bradshaw to enter certain segments of the development, either west or east side of that track.
Yeah, Ron Bakari, Director of Transportation. Maybe I could just briefly say that we are working with the CCTC on this. We sent a formal letter back in August. We've been continuing to pursue it. We have, we have basically got them to move off absolutely not, but not far from that, which is they're looking for alternatives to maybe close other openings in order to go ahead and allow an at-grade crossing. But we are going to continue to pursue an at-grade crossing. We've developed cost estimates, and we've submitted cost estimates as well as a preliminary design in hopes of, in partnership, working with them for a temporary solution, and also looking to agreeing to, if there's a future core, something, a future use that would require something else, the county would obviously be a partner in that, and we would also agree to be a partner in that. But we are moving on. I would say that I think as part of our ongoing discussions, we'll keep that as a topic that we keep the board up to speed on. We're making some progress. It's tough, but certainly we're working towards that goal. I will say also that we have got a report from a consultant looking at, as far as the trigger is concerned, as far as volumes are concerned, to assure that the volumes aren't going to exceed the capacity. And they're not. There's plenty of volume there, but I do, but I do understand your comments about connectivity and the importance, for other reasons, of continuing to pursue this. So we'll keep it as part of an update to the board.
Let me ask you, though, because we're issuing bond funding here, certainly far below what was at least contemplated, and there may be more to follow this particular bond issuance. As I understood it, though, we took it out of the funding program. The Waterman Crossing was taken out of the funding program, so there's no identified funding. Is that accurate?
The Waterman Crossing is within the SCTDF, the Sacramento County Transportation Development Fee Program. And so there's funding available, but again, we are trying to pursue a realistic option, which would be an at-grade solution to that in order to build that.
But we took the burden off the developer. It was a trigger, and the original approval was going back 20-some years ago, that this would get built as development proceeded, which we've allowed to occur. And again, you know, a lot of new folks moving into new neighborhoods are being constructed, in large part at Lennar, not solely, but so there's no requirement for the developer to any longer to build. They'll only pay their development fees under the scenario that was adopted last fall. Is that right?
Not exactly. It's still in the implementation agreement with the Lennars, the developer. It's still in the implementation agreement. However, we do need to come up with a solution, because it can't be built until we can, and so the Department of Transportation, my department is working very hard to come up with a solution so that it can be resolved. It's still in the implementation agreement, but right now, we don't have a resolution on what it is that would be required to be implemented. And so we're kind of working both sides of the equation, and certainly that will come back in front of the board once we can, we can come up with a solution.
Ron, and again, I may return to Ann and Mr. Hartwig on this. I think this needs to get elevated. I know I've raised the issue a couple different times, as we've talked about fees and so forth. This is a key roadway within the network of circulation grid for those new developing neighborhoods. And to have it just stop short and then continue to build, one, I think the issue gets raised over time about, you know, I've experienced this as a representative of this district for 25-plus years, is that folks begin to say, oh, that road's not going to connect, you know, and they get to presuming it's not going to. And then in the event that you had to grade separate at some point in time, that has a serious impact upon the landscape, but certainly on people's neighborhoods and so forth. And I get it. It was contemplated at the time, and currently, we're pushing for an at-grade. I think we need to figure out a solution, because, and sooner rather than later, even if funding isn't immediately identified, and if there's bonding capacity available in this district. Because, again, there's no presumption for development that didn't include a Waterman Crossing of those tracks interior to the existing grid of Gerber, Florin, Elk Grove, Florin, and Bradshaw, and we've got divided neighborhoods. As that bill continues to the west, we have a division there, and I think this needs, you know, beyond, you know, the effort certainly, and I appreciate that, Ron, you updated me yesterday, and you just did so on the record. But I've been in discussions previously, talking about abandoning other crossings to other people's properties. That didn't go so well with other folks who, again, value that access to their... That didn't go so well with other folks who, again, value that access to their property. And secondly, it still requires the PUC to agree, and, you know, and the railroad as well. And my understanding is, is that, you know, at one time, it was a one-for-one, and then they were asking for a two-to-one, and I don't know what it is now, for abandonment versus giving you the rights to have a safe crossing that's, you know, controlled at grade. And so I do think this needs to be elevated, because this is not just a public works issue, it's important to a developing neighborhood, and I think the premise has been that we're going to complete that circulation. You're pursuing it now, but, you know, we're, you know, 15 years into the build out there, and it's becoming more and more evident that we've got this lack of connectivity. And I guess I would also ask, I don't know whose responsibility it is, but if we're getting dumping or other nuisance activities at the areas where that Waterman currently terminates in approaching this, then that needs to be a priority for public works, as well as if we need to involve the sheriff. And I know I've gotten calls from neighborhood folks on that. So, again, I'm supportive. I've told you in the past, I'm more than willing to participate in meetings, and certainly have had a role in some of the previous discussions that really haven't materialized. But I just can't continue to just kind of simmer out there, and well, it'll get taken care of, you know, somewhere down the line. I think it needs to be addressed much more imperatively than maybe in the last few years, so.
Yeah, I understand, and I should have mentioned that we are going to address the illegal dumping and some of the other concerns that came up.
Okay. No, I appreciate that, Ron. So, again, I just, I said to Ann and Steve, but I think this needs to get elevated. It's not just EOT pushing it. This is a community planning issue. It's one where this Board has made commitments, and the development that has preceded, as well as that will continue, you know, is, there's expectation that it's going to be built, and they're paying for a portion of it as well, so.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then on the other matter I wanted to ask about, I understand there's a Lennar representative on the phone, and this is not so much to the bonding, but we continue to have an issue on a previous element of development out there as relates to the drainage basin at Gerber Road. It was raised in a letter to this Board this morning. We've been trying to resolve it for three years. You know, plant material was put in, it was allowed to die, irrigation wasn't sufficient. And I guess for Mr. Seavy, whoever's on the phone, I'm of the belief that that needs to be addressed, addressed immediately. I've had understandings from Lennar, as well as from our staff, that that was going to be addressed over two construction seasons now. We're in the third season, and I, very frankly, I'm tired of receiving neighborhood complaints that are very legitimate. So I'm going to ask you on the phone, directly on the record, what's the plans for getting that landscaping in that basin and getting it done quickly?
So I believe we've got Jack Seavy on the line from Lennar.
Yeah.
Mr. Jack Seavy, are you on the line?
I just received a note that Mr. Seavy didn't want to join.
I see.
Okay, well, that's the case. Then I guess we'll have this issue back before the Board. We can actually have it come up on the agenda if it can't get worked out, because, again, I've received, you know, plenty of comments about how it was going to get done and what the delays were. I was understanding to a point, but again, I think the neighborhood has tolerated enough out there as it relates to that. So.
Yes.
Okay, so that's a pending matter. And it wasn't for you, Ron, you guys are in charge of the basin, so.
I just wanted to mention that we are going to have, get a meeting together next week to address every item on the agenda that was on that letter. That includes one of them, and Water Resources, as well as Southgate, will be part of that meeting.
Very good. Okay, good. Well, you can give him a copy of this tape if you'd like to, Ron, that helps. So, thanks. Okay, with that, ma'am chair, thank you for the indulgence, and I'm prepared to move the staff recommendation unless you have any other callers or comments.
Let me first ask, thank you Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Serna or Kennedy, did you have questions or comments?
Not at this time, thank you, Chair.
None for me.
Okay, thank you. And do we have any public comment on this item?
We did not have any public comments.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Natoli, and a second by Supervisor Desmond. And roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Desmond Frost.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Natoli.
Aye.
Serna.
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Okay, next item, please.
And just for the record, the only person that was on the phone was Nick Jones. He was the financial advisor.
Okay.
Okay, so for item 48, I do want to point out that there will be a title correction on the action summary. It'll show the correct supervisory districts, which should be Serna, Kennedy, Desmond, and Natoli, and the impacted area is the Sacramento City Unified School District. This is the authorization for the issuance and sale of bonds of the Sacramento City Unified School District General Obligation Bonds, election of 2012 Measure Q, 2021 Series G, in an amount not to exceed $77,100,000, and authorization for the levy of taxes for the Sacramento City Unified School District, 2021 General Obligation Refunding Bonds, accepting the designation of paying agent.
Okay, again, Colin Bettis, the County Debt Officer. The item before you now is the issuance of the Sacramento City Unified School District General Obligation Bonds, election of 2012 Measure Q, Series G, in a not-to-exceed amount of $77,100,000. These bonds are intended to fund a variety of projects, including but not limited to the Albert Einstein Core Academic Renovation, High School HVAC Central Plant upgrades, JFK HVAC repairs, and the roof repairs for Building C, and the elementary school telecenter upgrades. There are many other projects, those are just the key projects. The Board of Education of the Sacramento City Unified School District requests that the county authorize the issuance of the sale of the general obligation bonds. The district has received a qualified certification in its most recent interim budget report, which prevents it from selling the bonds on its own behalf. The school district will issue its own refunding bonds for prior issuances of general obligation bonds for savings greater than 5%. For all of this, for all series of bonds planned to be issued, the county will act as the paying agent. While the county will act as the paying agent, no revenues of the county are pledged for the payment of the bonds. The recommended actions are the following: for the county of Sacramento to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of bonds of Sacramento City Unified School District not to exceed $77,100,000 pursuant to one or more bond purchase agreements, approving the form of and authorizing the execution and delivery of said bond purchase agreements, approving the forms of one or more paying agent agreement, and authorizing the execution of necessary documents and certificates relating to the bonds. Two, authorize and direct the Chief Fiscal Officer of the county and the Director of the Department of Finance in consultation with County Council to do any and all things to execute and deliver any and all documents of the bonds. And, third, to authorize the Director of Department of Finance in consultation with County Council to execute and deliver a refunding paying agent agreement for the concurrent issuance of the district's 2021 General Obligation Refunding Bonds and other related actions. The following representatives hopefully are available on the conference line, should you have any questions. Rose Ramos of the Sacramento City Unified School District, Dale Scott and Joe Crump of Dale Scott and Company, the financial advisor for the school district, and Meredith Johnson from Dan Iss Wolliver Kelly, serving as bond counsel and disclosure counsel. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you. I do not see any supervisors in the queue. I'll ask Supervisor Kennedy and Serna if you have any questions.
No questions, Madam Chair. Just a real brief comment. Both Mr. Serna and I were the co-chairs for Measures Q and R, and I just want to thank the voters of Sacramento County for your continued support of education of our kids and the overwhelming support toward both of these measures. It's meant a tremendous difference, made a tremendous difference for the kids going to those schools. So with that, I will move staff recommendation.
Thank you Supervisor Kennedy. And do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor. Serna has seconded, and roll call vote, please.
Supervisors Desmond Frost.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Natoli.
Aye.
Serna.
Aye.
And unanimous vote. And we do not have any public comments as well.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we are going to adjourn to closed session and.
We're going to move the closed session item to the end of the day.
Okay, we are moving closed session to the end of the day, so we are adjourned.
Till two.
Till 2:00 PM, and this time, for the first time in a while, we have time for lunch. So this meeting's adjourned. Welcome back to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors meeting. Today's date is June 8, and we're just beginning our afternoon session. This meeting is called to order. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll and establish quorum.
Okay, good afternoon. Supervisors Desmond Frost.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. Could you read our first item, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item 49 is the hearing on 2021 redistricting process, overview of mapping tools, and public input on communities of interest and mapping priorities.
Good afternoon Natasha.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I'm Natasha Drain, governmental relations and legislative officer. This is the first official public hearing on redistricting as required by the Fair Maps Act. Today, we'll have two presentations, one from staff, and one from National Demographics Corporation, or NDC, our redistricting consultant. Kim Navva, your Director of Public Information, will discuss public outreach and community engagement. And we also have from NDC in the chambers Doug Yocum with, again, NDC. He'll talk about redistricting, the timelines, the rules, the goals. And then Douglas Johnson is joining us via Skype, and he'll cover mapping tools. And then finally, and probably most importantly, this is your opportunity as required to give the public a chance to share their interest and feedback into this process. So with that, I'll hand it over to Kim Navva.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. I'm Kim Navva, Public Information Director, and I'll be presenting our public outreach plan for redistricting 2021. Elements of this will look familiar to you, as it is similar to the presentation from May 4. However, given that this is the first official public hearing for Sacramento County's redistricting, it's important to share our outreach plan. The purpose of Sacramento County's redistricting 2021 public outreach plan is to engage, promote, and urge participation by Sacramento County residents in the process. This is a big job. How do we achieve this? With the help of voter registration and elections and their community engagement efforts, we achieve this through promoting use of the redistricting website, utilizing Sacramento County communication vehicles, building on existing organizational networks, developing and sharing informative toolkits in multiple languages. And I'll explain each of these tactics in this presentation. The redistricting website will be the primary source to disseminate all redistricting information and materials. Please note, at the top of the webpage, and at the top of this slide, in fact, on the top of every county webpage, is the option for Google Translate. All of the information on this website can be automatically translated using this feature. I'll talk about translation for documents linked from the website in just a moment. We put the most crucial information front and center of the website, of course, which is what is redistricting, why is redistricting important, and how can the public participate in redistricting? Now, we've made several changes to the website since the last presentation, based on feedback from outreach meetings, and this is exactly how the process should work. Users indicated that they were going to these three buttons you see up here, and not necessarily to the navigation pane at the top of the website. We adjusted the webpage so that the information at the navigation page is also available when users access the corresponding buttons. Now, directly under these high-profile buttons is the hyperlink for users to sign up for email or text alerts about redistricting news and updates. Those who opt into the alerts will receive all of the county's news stories about redistricting, including alerts for each upcoming public hearing or workshop. An important element of the website is the public meetings and hearings webpage. Now, this slide illustrates the meetings matrix. When public hearings and workshops are scheduled, we identify the meeting type, including an overview of the presentation for that particular meeting, the date, time, and location, a web link for live viewing, the agenda item number, and all supporting materials for the redistricting item, including the board letter, presentations, written public comment, and other materials. A recording of each of the meetings is uploaded and available to view after each meeting. An explanation of the Sacramento County redistricting process is available on the website in printable PDFs, as you see on this slide. All printable PDFs will be available not only in the legally required languages of English, Spanish, and Chinese, but in seven additional threshold languages in the county, which I'll focus on in a few more slides. We do this because the Google Translate tool does not work for document links. The county has a multitude of communication vehicles through which we can disseminate information. Of course, I've already mentioned the dedicated website, and the county's social media platforms are amazingly effective mechanisms to get messaging out to our audience and direct them to our website. For Facebook, we have more than 23,000 followers, Twitter, more than 24,000, Instagram, about 3,500. Nextdoor is a platform that is available to all who reside in Sacramento County and have a Nextdoor account. For YouTube, we have 810 subscribers, but you don't have to be a subscriber to view content. This is an important platform to us to share videos through other social media. We have established a dedicated email in which we can receive feedback from the public and take questions, and that is redistricting@saccounty.net. We can also distribute information via email through our GovDelivery email system. We have established lists already with Sacramento County news and press releases, which number more than 50,000 recipients. We have our redistricting 2021 list, which has more than 500 recipients and continues to grow each day. And of course, we have the Board Agenda notifications for public hearings, and that's about 6,200 recipients. By signing up for the redistricting 2021 email and text alerts, individuals and organizations will receive emailed notifications of agenda items, meetings, public hearings, workshops, redistricting plan, submission process, and other related information. And of course, we have a phone number for folks to call as well. Other county communication vehicles include the digital sign at Highway 99 at the Calvine exit. Depending on how many messages are running, generally, a message holds for eight seconds in a one-minute cycle. The number of eyes we have on the sign in one week is more than 440,000, and we currently have a message running for June and July that you might have seen with a simple message, why is Sacramento County redistricting important, as well as the redistricting website address. We also have our Sacramento County newsletter. The newsletter is targeted to audiences who are residents in underrepresented neighborhoods in the unincorporated county and may not have access to broadband. This hits more than 80,000 mailboxes per newsletter, and the cover story for the July, August, September issue will be about redistricting. We have clear, concise printed materials in plain language, and this is especially important for translations. You can see here an example of a one-page printable document with the most critical information about redistricting. You can find this and other materials on the redistricting website under toolkits. We also have public meetings, such as this one, and then community and district events. These are essential in our outreach as we discuss redistricting in a public forum and literally meet people where they are to provide information and to get feedback from our residents.
Ma'am Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Natoli.
Kim, just back on the county newsletter, when you said it's sent to about 80,000 households that are maybe underrepresented or not have access to broadband, does that include the rural portions of the county?
Absolutely, includes the rural portions of the county.
So Delta, all the outlined areas, whether they're in the southern part of the county or some northern parts of the county as well.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, ma'am chair.
Thank you.
Supervisor.
So we're also building on existing networks. Sacramento County already has a unique opportunity, given the community-based and other organizations we've already worked with for both Census 2020 and COVID-19. We also work with businesses, special districts, faith-based organizations, and other networks. The Public Information Office has been in communication with contacts from these networks, asking for assistance in reaching their specific communities. asking for assistance in reaching their specific communities. And I'm pleased to say that all replies have not only been affirmative, they've been enthusiastic in their willingness to partner with the county to disseminate this important information. Also, our wonderful staff from Voter Outreach and Elections have worked extensively with these organizations to either make a special presentation about redistricting or to participate in existing meetings or community events to talk about the county's redistricting efforts. And lastly, I want to talk about the toolkits. As I mentioned earlier, the county has to provide documents in English, Spanish, and Chinese, but we're going the extra step in translating into seven additional languages. These languages include the county's threshold languages, which are defined as languages that are identified as the primary language of at least 5% of the service population. We worked with the county's Departments of Human Assistance and Health Services for additional languages for their client lists and helped us to establish this. And of course, we will add more as needed if we hear back from any of our CBOs. Toolkits for the residents will include electronic flyers and handouts, all translated, as well as videos of public presentations, public hearings, and soon, the virtual workshops. That concludes my presentation. I am happy to take any questions you might have.
Supervisor Serna and Kennedy, do you have any questions at this time?
Not this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to Doug Yoakum from NDC.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Doug.
Thank you so much. I'm waiting for my presentation to come up here. Can I ask if we can hear Doug Yoakum? Who's Doug Yoakum? I'm Doug Yoakum. Doug Johnson, who is attached remotely to this meeting? Because he's the second to this presentation.
Doug Johnson, are you present and accounted for on the phone?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
We are ready. I will quickly go through the first part, because you've seen most of it. Just wanted to bring you up to date on where we are and where we have been. The next step is in the middle of this slide, on June 21st and 23rd. We're going to have our virtual community workshops. These are all online, no in-person, where I will make a quick presentation as to what redistricting is and what the requirements are. And then, most of it is devoted to public comment, because that's the purpose of our community meetings, is to get the public involved. And Kim has been doing a great job of recruiting everybody to get ready for this process. Then you have, after that, you will have another board meeting here, the second official meeting to get feedback based on that process, and also on the workshops that have been held in each one of your districts, which we intend to do. And your staff will be working with you on scheduling those. Then, in mid-August, the Census Bureau will release its data. And there's a court case in Alabama where the Census Bureau has committed to August 15th as their release date. So we now have that in stone. And then after that, California has to do their massaging of the data based on prisoner location and things of that nature. And then we will have a usable database that all cities and counties and the state can use. At that point, it'll probably be around October 1st. Then, you get into the meat of the process. November 2nd is your third official hearing, where we will actually be reviewing maps. And if you would go ahead of that date, October 15th would be the date that folks in the public would be, is the deadline for them to submit their map that we can all look at. And so, we expect to get quite a few of those. Our job at NDC would be to summarize that information for you at the November 2nd meeting, so you can begin to make decisions as to what kind of maps you'd like to adopt, which is scheduled for November 17th. And we have some flexibility that perhaps we can do it on December 7th. So that's the schedule of the, for the board.
Excuse me, Doug. Will the maps, as you present them at that time, just be the maps that the community submitted? Or will they be maps that the community submitted and then you reviewed to qualify all the, to apply all the qualifying factors?
Yes, we will review them all, and we will inform the board as to whether they are compliant with population and other requirements, which I was just about to go into.
Oh, okay.
And, because you've seen this also. But this is also, I wanted you to see it again, because this is what I will be presenting at the virtual meeting and the community meetings in your district. As to, so the public will be informed as to what the requirements are for drawing a map. And Doug will explain to you in a moment what tools can be used, will be used for those maps. And here's the questions we're asking, again, that the community answer for us. What is your neighborhood? Can you draw a boundary around it for us? Then, communities of interest, which is a social or an economic interest that then can be, perhaps be defined by a boundary. And then, community input telling us whether that that community is best served by being in a district or a multiple number of districts. Doug now will explain what kind of tools we will be providing to, for the public to participate in this process. And I will try to show them as he goes along here.
Thank you, Mr. Yoakum. Appreciate it. And thank you, board members, for this opportunity to appear virtually or telephonically before you again. On the slide, since I have a public mapping and map review tool, the thing to emphasize here is that all of these tools are designed to empower people. There's a lot I'm going to go through, and it can be somewhat overwhelming at first glance. So I want people to know, there's no requirement to use any of these tools. These are all just to help them. We always go back to, if someone wants to sketch a map on a napkin and turn it in, we will take that, because we'll take whatever maps anyone wants to submit. But these will help people turn in higher-quality, more maps that are more likely to meet the legal requirement. And we also have different tools that I'll walk through in just a moment for different purposes and levels of technical skill and interest. So we have a simple, kind of learn-about-your-community map, which I'll talk about called Story Map. We have a very simple, essentially as easy as Google Maps tool to use for people that just want to review maps, so they can comment on what they like and dislike, without having to learn how to figure out how to draw their own map. But neither of those take any learning. They're really easy to use, and they're just informative. They don't collect, they don't collect any feedback from residents. The next three they'll talk about, and Doug Yoakum touched on briefly, is a very simple, just draw-your-neighborhood tool. So people don't have to get in and draw a whole county-wide map. They can simply draw their community of interest, that Mr. Yoakum was just talking about, and say, please, keep our community of interest together as you draw a county-wide map. And then, for those that want to really get into this, take their teeth into it, and draw a full district map, we have both paper and Excel version for people that don't want to get online and use an online tool. And then coming is a very powerful, data-rich, draw-draft map tool that we think people really will enjoy using.
Excuse me.
And I should emphasize that all, sure.
Oh, excuse me, Doug. Supervisor Natoli had a question, and I think it was on this slide.
Yeah, in each of those slides, Mr. Johnson, you, there's an overlay that says Sacramento County Tools will be live by June 8th. That's today. Are they live currently? And why are we using Goleta and all these other communities? Why wouldn't we? If we're live today, we use our information in this example.
Yes. Well, one of the things that Mr. Yoakum mentioned was the delay in getting the data from the Census, and that has delayed the launch of the tools. But we are very close to launching these, and a couple of these are live, but they just went live this morning. And so, there wasn't time to update the presentation and to get them on the website yet.
Okay.
So if I go through these, we are using examples from the other jurisdictions. But as people go to the website tomorrow and later this week, these tools will be appearing live for Sacramento County on the website. We just didn't try to get them up today.
Okay, so, just to be clear. So parts of the tools are up today? The rest will be up by the end of the week? Or they'll all be up by today? Because that's not what the header says here on three slides that you've shown.
Right, right. As you know, these presentations are start for the board presentation process a week and a half in advance. And we had thought that the different providers and web hosts would have them all up today. Because you are the first county getting these things up, it has taken longer than the providers expected. So they're not live today.
Okay. So what's the new date? End of the week?
For everything except the final one, the Caliper, prior miracle one, yes, we should have, we expect to have all those things up this week. The Caliper one, they told us it'll probably be next week.
Okay, so maybe our website can be updated to indicate to folks since we're giving this presentation live, that that information is forthcoming, and it will be available on whatever date we anticipate it. So, okay, thank you.
We should also emphasize that the data that will be associated with these tools, at least initially, is the estimated data.
Right, no, that's been cleared.
And the official data will be in October.
Okay, no, that's fine. I mean, that's, you've been saying, we've been saying that from the get-go. Just that we say tools are going to be available today, and people go look, and they say, well, you said it, and we didn't, you know. So there's understanding.
Understood.
And there's a qualifier as to what we're using as far as estimates versus the data that we'll have to adhere to, so.
Correct.
Yes, our apologies on the delay, but I will say the reason that the timing has been hard to predict, and we didn't hit the date, is that the county is the first to launch the full suite of tools of the counties in the state. So it's good to be cutting edge, but sometimes we don't quite hit our targets when we are cutting edge. We'll just briefly touch on each of these tools with the individual slides to, Doug Yoakum, if you can put the Story Map slide up?
Okay, we'll go back.
Yeah. So, one of the things, and I'll just, I'll be brief about each of these slides, but when we ask people to tell us about their community of interest, Mr. Yoakum walked through kind of the questions you want to answer. Common Cause traces this in an interesting way. They say, tell us your story. And so, this Story Map tool, and if people click on the link, they can see the Goleta was one in-depth, and the Sacramento one will have similar data. You can really get data on demographics, socioeconomic, zoning, all that kind of data to tie your neighborhood together. And so, when folks are just talking about, well, we all speak the same language, it can actually show or reference data on language spoken at home from these Story Maps. Want to go to the next slide, the map review tool? Again, this is just a, this is as easy to use as Google Maps. When people go to this site, there's a pop-up box to give them about 10 seconds of instruction in text. And then, they can go and they can choose, you can see on the right-hand side, the list of the different maps, which are here, 123, 124, 125. So people can overlay different maps. And there will be all that socioeconomic data and city borders, neighborhood borders, all those kinds of things are live. But residents can zoom in, zoom out. They can even change the base map to a satellite image, if they really want to see exactly where these lines are going. And this is the best way to look at and review all the maps as they come in, because you can really get that detailed perspective, and it's got lots of capability to review maps as well. You go to the next slide. The simple map drawing tool. This is for people who just want paper. They either don't have a good internet connection, or they don't want to get online. So this one is from Lake Forest. The one for the county actually breaks it up into census tracts and cities and places. So you get a number for each census tract, or for the smaller cities and places, a number for the city. And you just go through and add the numbers together. As you get those total population things, it says right on it what the population target is for each district. And they're kind of fun. People often will have the, you can see their map in the margin if they've done their work coming up with it. For those who want to take one more step, the next slide shows, it's the same map, but instead of the population numbers, now you can see highlighted with the red arrow, these are ID numbers. They use that map, and if you're comfortable with Excel, we always say it's not worth learning Excel, but more and more people are already familiar with it. But then you go into the Excel sheet, and in that column, for each ID number, you enter in which district you assign it to. And a second worksheet in that one file then does all the math for you. And so, you'll actually get demographics. And over on the right-hand side, you see the little green box that's the population ballot. And as long as you're in the population range, it will be green, and it will go to red if you're outside of the population ballot number. Pretty easy tool to use, either through your paper or Excel, if people are comfortable with that. The District R tool, you can see on this slide, it does the shading. And there, in this case, it's showing total population numbers in each census block, but we'll have all the demographic socioeconomic factors that we have in our database available. So people can look and see, where are there more renters? You know, if they want to, if their neighborhood is heavily renters, they can pull up the data, see where the renters are, and shade in that area as their community of interest. And you can zoom, again, you can zoom in and out. You can see on the top right, really simple tools. A paintbrush, an eraser, and then a finger where you can move the screen around. So it's very, very easy to use to draw your neighborhood. And then, the, again, the Caliper online tool. Once this is launched, we'll also put together a short video showing people how to use it, so that people can quickly learn in five or 10 minutes of watching a video how to draw a full map using all the data and all the demographics and all of the mapping tools that we have on our desktop computers. So, and this tool, it shows the full demographics as you go along. And even better, if you want to highlight the top of this, where you see the little screenshot where it says English, there's a pulldown menu with, there's six language options. English, Spanish, Portuguese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and Korean. So we don't have control over which languages. Those are provided by the software provider. But there is, in particular, Spanish available. And then, all of the controls and menu options will switch to that language. So, the quick spin-through, the biggest thing to take away is whatever tool people use, or even if they just write an email, we want them to answer those questions that you, Yoakum, posed earlier on about your community of interest. What ties it together? What makes it a neighborhood or a community? Why does that matter for redistricting? And why do they think it's important to keep their areas together in a different district at all possible? So with that quick spin-through, I'll wrap it up and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I do not see supervisors in the queue with questions. Do Supervisor Kennedy or Serna have questions?
Not this time.
None for me.
Okay, thank you. I, we have no questions, so I believe, are there any other presenters? Or should we move forward to public comment?
Public comment, please.
Public comment, okay. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing. And do we have any calls?
We do not have any public comments at this time.
Oh, okay. So we'll, is this a formal hearing? We'll close the hearing? And bring it back to the board for questions or comments or input. And I'll begin by just asking, I think you might have already, you already gave us some flyers, but for those upcoming two public meetings online, I have a lot, I have a lot of constituents who are interested in participating. And I was wondering if we could, if you could send something out to us that we can distribute also through our communications?
Oh, absolutely. I will send you all copies of all the printable PDFs. And if you'd like us to print up some copies for you, we can do that as well.
Okay. I'm not sure about printed. I guess my staff will, we can notify you if we need that. And thank you, Kim. And Supervisor Natoli had a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and certainly appreciate the work that's been contributing to this thus far. And I think it certainly is laying the groundwork and found- thus far, and I think it certainly is laying the groundwork and foundation for a very robust process. I guess I wanted to, on the record today, make note that as each of us have had briefings on this, that it's anticipated that we would have five community meetings, public hearings, formal ones. And one of the things that, and I had a good deal of conversation with staff about this, and I've continued to grapple with it, and that is, is geographically, District Five has got 650 square miles, and to try to find a location central as relates to in-person participation, it's a bit of a challenge, to say the least. And I know that our election voter registration staff, along with our PIO and county executive staff, and certainly our consultants, you know, have looked at that, and I think certainly in fairness to each of us as members of the board and the constituencies that we, you know, represent in district, but certainly in the county, tried to align to have one hearing each district. Part of the issue, though, and I wanted to put this forward, because having participated in this process, recognizing there have been, you know, new frameworks for fair maps and for certain consideration of materials, but District Five has continued to grow, and certainly just from the estimated numbers we have, is it a recognition that there's going to be probably some shifting of population from District Five as it relates to redistricting? Again, we're a long ways off from that. But there are two kind of distinct portions of District Five geographically, and, you know, part of being in the northern part of the district along the Highway 50 corridor and communities that align along the 50 corridor, but also obviously those that are kind of central to the county where I abut other supervisors' districts, District Five does, and in fact, I abut all other four supervisors' districts. And then further to the south, obviously with the concentration of population in the El Grove area, but then you can travel from El Grove and go, you know, 45 miles distant before you get to the county line. And so what I was, wanted to put forward is that I know that they were asking for feedback for me to pick one location, and I'm having a real struggle with that. I just think from the standpoint of reaching out to the communities that are currently in District Five, you know, recognizing that some of those areas may get shifted, and again, we've had shifts occur in the previous redistricting over the past four decades. I, and I've had requests from folks along the 50 corridor, from the Rosemont community in particular, and I think the Butterfield Riviera East community, which were in play in the conversations previously 10 years ago. I just, again, I'm going to make the point here that I still feel pretty strongly about having a second public hearing, one that has obviously the framework, there's some costs associated with it, but I did, I think, two distinct ones in District Five, and again, willing to hear from my colleagues, you know, I know we're going to do a lot virtually, but in the geographical distances and some of the remoteness of some of those communities, and again, there are other distant locations in the county, so again, I'm not making, this is the exception, as much as I am making the point about having two hearings in District Five, and particularly because I abut all four other districts, and that's the likelihood there's going to be a shift with other districts, and respecting, again, population centers, but also communities of interest, neighborhoods that we're going to learn about as we go, you know, through the public participation process. And so I wanted to put that out there, because again, I haven't reconnected with staff since our briefing, I've given a lot of thought to it, I've talked with a couple of community members about it, and so I wanted to put that out there. Not that we're deciding that today necessarily, but I wanted to share that, and I know I've had a chance to talk with our staff about that, so I wanted to.
And Supervisor, we can certainly work with you on that.
Okay. And I know you said you would.
And any other supervisor who has additional needs.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor. Okay. Do we have any other supervisors who would like to speak?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Kennedy.
Yes, Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you. I just, to the consultant, you know, thank you for the information, and I think Don makes good points. Also, is there going to be an opportunity for us to have a one-on-one? Because we've already received feedback from constituents, and, you know, being that we're extremely familiar with our district and, you know, the dynamics of each district, is there going to be an opportunity for one-on-one, if not in-person, meetings, at least Zoom or phone calls with supervisors?
What do you mean by one-on-one?
Well, you'd be one and I'd be one. That would be one-on-one.
Well, that's pretty simple.
Doug Johnson can answer that question, if he's still on.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Yes. As we go along and as you see the input coming in and see the, and I presume probably play around with the tools a little bit yourselves as well, is that something we want to set up when we get into the actual mapping stage? We can arrange that.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Great. Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Serna, do you have anything?
I do. Thank you, Chair. Question for the consultants, and it has to do with the appropriateness of what we will be deliberating in terms of changes to the boundaries. I know that our, you know, the fundamental reason for this exercise every 10 years is to equalize population in the five districts. However, one of the things that I raised during my briefing on this recently with staff is wanting to know to what extent it's appropriate or not that the board and the public would also consider what we or they perceive to be formerly gerrymandered parts of districts. Is that fair game in terms of revising the maps?
Well, certainly. If you or the input from the public indicates that they're not pleased with something that happened 10 years ago, you have the option to adjust that. If they testify in public to that at any of our workshops or at a public meeting here, obviously, we will take that into consideration. And if it's a serious question, we will present a map that solves the issue, if that's the consensus of the board. So yes, absolutely. If there are issues like that, I assume they will be coming up during these many workshops and hearings, and you and us together will address that.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna, and thank you, Doug. And Doug, for all of your hard work, and we really appreciate that NDC is our consultant on this. And I want to also acknowledge and thank the staff for their expertise in so many ways. Kim and Natasha and to our Registrar Our Voters staff, we thank all of you for all your hard work on this. And I believe that.
And Board Chair, if I might?
Yes.
Just, sorry to interrupt, but literally an email just popped up on my screen from Caliper saying that the Maps2Online redistricting tool is ready. So we will be getting that link over, and all the tools should be going up on the website tomorrow.
Oh, great. Okay. Great. And were you done, Doug? Did I interrupt you?
Yes. No, no.
You were, you had completed your presentation. Okay. Okay. Great. That completes our update and our public hearing, and we thank all of you. And we'll, at this time, we'll move on to the next item.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, I'm going to call up Item 46. That was moved from this morning to the afternoon. Approve the County of Sacramento Library Facilities Master Plan.
Good afternoon. Chair Frost, members of the board, Jeff Gasway, Director of General Services. In February of this year, General Services Group Four Architects and the Sacramento Library Authority presented the draft of the County Facilities Libraries Master Plan. The master plan presented a new vision for the county's library facilities and a plan for the future investment in the facilities to align with the type, capacity, and geographical distribution of space for Sacramento County Public Libraries Authority service vision and the community's needs. Several amendments to the master plan, the board requested several amendments to the master plan prior to final approval. Couple of those were including developer fee sources of funding. We also attached an appendix with the master plan to provide detail on capital budget cost models for recommendation, recommended facility projects. And we revised the master plan to emphasize the delivery method.
This is Alma.
For the Vineyard Library. We didn't recommend a delivery method, we just listed options within the plan. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer. Don Merks is here. Jared Keller, Deputy Director of Sacramento Public Library, is also online.
Supervisor Natoli.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Thanks, Jeff, and certainly to the folks that are on the phone with you, and I want to certainly note the changes that were made based upon the conversation we had at the board, and I think in some, you know, polishing of the document. And I trust, as my colleague to have a chance to go through it, and I do think that the work effort, in fact, we had a contract amendment on Item 21 extension this morning, and, you know, for the amount we put forward, we have a document that I think presents, you know, a very clear picture of where we stand as relates to our facilities, certainly compliments to Mr. Gasway and his department for, I think, you know, some of the work that is credited here as it relates to the condition of, in some cases, some very aged facilities, but nonetheless, for the, their ongoing efforts to accomplish that. And I guess what I wanted to, and again, we're on the eve of starting our budget discussions this year, and some of this will be related in the, you know, as we undertake the budget discussions tomorrow. But in my review of, you know, where we are, and it's in the master plan document, there's about $140 million of anticipated improvements that, again, all those haven't been bedded down to the level of detail, but it's a significant backlog of work that could involve renovation, remodel, new construction, in the case of a couple of the libraries of Vineyard, one was one I focused in on some of my comments earlier in the spring. But, you know, a significant backlog and acknowledgement, obviously, of improvements that are needed in the county, in the county system of libraries, which is, we have the 12 libraries and 10 of the sites which we own. I also want to call attention, though, and we're going to talk about this more tomorrow, so I'm not getting out of order, but in the CIP, we've got about $7.5 million anticipated in, I guess, presumed funding for improvements, about a million and a half dollars a year in the CIP for some modest investment in our libraries. But on the unfunded side, and I want to be fair, I think it's still included the Orange Belt Library in the unfunded side, but there was about 18 million, if I took it back to Orange Belt Library, that was about $8 million, and most of those are ADA requirements that came out of the Kitchell work that the General Services worked on. So if I take those totals together, though, you know, that gets us to probably somewhere, you know, north of $155 million, and we're contemplating in the actual budgeting about seven and a half over the next five years. And that presents, in at least my view, a real challenge. It says that, you know, we badly need to invest in libraries, and, you know, they serve, you know, roughly 600, I think it's over 600,000 residents, 660,000 residents, according to the master plan, you know, a geographical spread of about 800 square miles, you know, a variety of vintage of facilities. And so the reason I wanted to call attention to this is that it's great to have a master plan, but when the conclusion is, and I don't think that, you know, certainly Jeff could have recommended anything different, or David, or Stephen at this point in time, it just says, "Cost," well, this is from what it says, it says, "Cost to implement the findings in the Library Facilities Master Plan will be incurred over time as funding is available. Projects will be included in the capital improvement plan for the board's approval." I mean, that's very general. I guess there's nothing, you know, untruthful about that, but that doesn't go to the heart of what I believe is the concern that I want to express, and I believe is expressed on behalf of the people of this county as relates to the county library system, is we don't really have a plan to fund this. I mean, we have what, you know, we have the city and counties property tax fund, of which this year, we, last week, the library board, about a million and a half out of reserve to do some repaints, to do a couple of upgrades to restrooms, to add some tablet stations. Again, not insignificant, but very, very modest, but at that rate, we're never going to catch up with the deferred maintenance, but the backlog, and with the ADA requirements now adding another eight or nine million dollars to the picture. I just think it really begs the question, and I guess the point of all this is that I'd like us to see, take this master plan, certainly in the context of discussions, which we can have later this week on budget and coming back in September, but we really need to figure out, if this is a high enough priority for this county, again, we're not going to fund all those things at one time, probably over, you know, a decade or two, but I don't see us really, you know, holding ground when it comes to improvements and to meeting the needs. I don't see how we get to, although the scenario on Vineyard is that you could lease a facility, but that's still a six or seven or eight million dollar price tag. We're not going to get there with development fees, we're not going to get there with the property tax base, and the bottom line in the report says, then you got to find out the general fund. Well, that's called upon pretty heavily, but if libraries are a big enough priority for this county, for this board, for our community, then we're going to need to look to dig a little deeper, I think. And so that's the point of it all. I think it's a good plan. It outlines where we are at a point in time, but doesn't really get the direction that I think this board needs to engage in. And again, if it's below X, Y, and Z, then maybe what we have in the CIP this year and ensuing years, and have a good report that tells that we need to do a lot of things, but if we don't put money behind it, then it really is somewhat meaningless in that sense. And so I guess what I'm asking, Madam Chair, to my colleagues, and again, to the county executive, is that I think we really need to engage, not just in the movement of the budget tomorrow and the rest later this week, but to have some discussion about how we're going to make libraries, because the other thing that's pointed out here, last point from the master plan, is that we're looking at getting close to the line of not being sustainable as relates to leaving the operations and some of the money that's drawn from reserve on the county-city side of it, where we were able to do some very modest things. And I just think that's an issue that has long been on the back burner, but as we look at hopefully an improving situation with, you know, county budgets and some one-time monies being available to us, and whether it can be used for some of these purposes, again, I guess yet to be determined, and we're going to have more discussion next week with the Deloitte report. I would just like to call this out. I think roads, parks, and libraries have long been on, and particularly parks and libraries, on the short end of receiving as it relates to the capital investment, and I think it's well past time, and I certainly take some of the, you know, the blame for this, but well past time for us to have a real honest and open conversation about how we're going to look at libraries, and again, and we'll talk about some of the other elements tomorrow, parks and roads and so forth, but I'm going to encourage us to certainly receive the report today, any comments we receive, but I think we need to come right back to this sometime this summer and spend some time talking about libraries, about financing options, but also in the realm, as I said, of some opportunities here. And again, we can use general fund, but general fund can be used for lots of things that gets called upon many times over, but I just think that we've shorted libraries for too long. So that's my comments.
Well, I think libraries are really important, as probably everyone knows, and I want, I don't know if you heard Supervisor Natoli, I got an email from the Library Authority that the governor this year has included something like 500 million toward libraries in this year's budget. It's not passed yet, but still has to go through Senate and Assembly, but I wonder if there's a way that we can have our legislative staff maybe put together a letter on behalf of our board to advocate for funding for libraries, because that might be one possible funding.
Yeah, I would concur.
And I totally agree that we should have that conversation as we move forward and find out what money is coming from the state and the federal government in the next couple of months. So thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Does that conclude your presentation?
It does, yes.
And I do not see a hand raised from Supervisor Serna or Kennedy, and so I guess that calls for a vote.
And we do not have any public comments as well.
And we do not have any public comments as well.
Oh, yes, thank you. All right. And so we need to approve the library facilities master plan, so I will, the Chair will move to approve.
I would second it, but I would ask, we actually slaked this for a workshop talking about finding, prior to our adoption of budget in September, county budget, and also as we, a little more is known about what dollars are coming down, I'd like to have a workshop to talk about. Because again, it's not just libraries and district, it's countywide. I mean, Arndemic is on top of the list, there's other improvements in libraries, certainly in District 4, but District 2 and 1 as well. And I'd like us to, again, Jeff's going to bring us what he can in the CIP, we're going to have that before us this week, but it's modest. It's a million and a half bucks. And it's real basic things that are comfort and safety, replacing glass windows and so forth, but it doesn't get to, I think, the core issue of some of the more definitive needs about facilities themselves and the age of them and so forth. So if your motion would include to
Yes.
A workshop for us, maybe in the August timeframe, as a run-up to our September budget, I would second your motion.
Are you wanting maybe a workshop that includes the condition of, the priority of library improvements and the conditions of those? Because I know
Yeah, it's all included in here, it's in here, so yeah, that's fine. That would be very good, we can really parse this out.
Can you, can we arrange that?
So those items are included in the master plan. I just want to be clear what you're wanting. It sounds like you're wanting some financing options, or?
I want to talk about making it a budget priority. And that, to me, and we can talk about it, we'll talk about it tomorrow, but we have a recommended budget. But, you know,
Talking about prioritizing.
If we just go with what we're recommending, we're a million and a half this year, and that's it.
Yes, I understand. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, and maybe it would be best to decide exactly what to bring to you in a workshop after the discussion tomorrow, I'm not sure, because I'm still not clear on what we would bring you in a workshop.
Well, you could, what you could do is prioritize those areas that need the most, and then identify options, like within the library JPA agreement, there are options. We can build new libraries, or we can update, or expand, or in some cases, they need more room, but if you build a new library, that exponentially makes the cost more to the county because we assume the whole cost of the capital improvement. So I guess in a workshop, you could help us understand, what are, which libraries would you prioritize that need it the most? And what are our options for those libraries? Like with Orangeville Library, we wanted the new library on the hill for $15 million, but we couldn't afford it, so we settled for expanding the lease and just getting some more space, and we ended up with a wonderful facility. It cost a lot, but not nearly the cost of the new library that was, had been planned over time. So I'm assuming that Supervisor Natoli is saying, how will you prioritize them, and what are our options, and how can we start putting our eyes on the goal and making it happen quicker?
Yeah, and maybe some scenarios. I mean, a million and a half a year, we're just barely treading water, and maybe if you take what the Library Authority put in, another million and two, so 2.7 million. But if we invested $5 million annually and had some set aside, we're talking about reserves tomorrow for county budget matters, but if Arndemic needs to be a full redo, how are you ever going to get to the $8 million if you just nibble away at roofs and parking lots and security features, and then the ADA just added $8 million to that? So how we could accomplish that over, again, you're not going to take it all in one bite, Ann, and you recognize that, but I think that a way to finance this, if we're going to rely on general fund, if that's going to be that, and then maybe go for state and federal monies, and we may have some opportunities that present themselves this year in particular, that could help us get a boost and a jumpstart. But where is it? Because otherwise, it just gets in the budget and year after year, and I say, I take some responsibility as much as anybody else. But I just, I think it's time, because otherwise, what the master plan says is that we've got some really good facilities, we do a pretty darn good job of maintaining older facilities, we also got a lot, a lot of needs out there, about $150 million worth.
I don't know when the state budget is finalized. Does anyone know?
Next Tuesday.
Pardon me?
Next Tuesday. They have to go.
So we'll know fairly quickly if the money's coming.
Yeah, hi, this is Jared from the library. We will receive notification from the State Library on the program, when and if it's funded, and we'll be able to provide more information on that. And I also wanted to say on behalf of myself, the library system, RIFCA, that we really appreciate this conversation that's happening, and we think this is really good. Typically, a lot of facilities' master plans just sit on the shelf, and this is really warming to see that we're really going to take action and actually make this a living document, and make some great things happen for our libraries. So on behalf of the library, I want to say thank you very much.
Jared, I didn't know you were on the phone. Thank you for speaking up. Appreciate that. Do you know more about the funding possibilities from the state than what I mentioned?
Yeah, actually, pretty much what you said is right on, Sue. We'll know more. It was for one-time funding specifically for deferred maintenance. This is truly an issue for a lot of libraries across the nation, is that the cost of maintenance has just outstripped what most jurisdictions can afford. And so what's happening in California is kind of what's happening everywhere. So the State Library, to the State Librarians' credit, has got a lot of traction on this, and we're hoping there will be some really good funding opportunities to fund much-needed improvements, or maybe even help fund some new builds.
And one thought occurs that, it may not be solely our money, but if we have that match ready to go, I think even with parks, if you've got some matching money, you can stand up and say, hey, we've got some money over here, but we need more to do this, then we're in a better position. And so again, not knowing what the criteria might be for what comes out of the budget in a few days, I think that may be another strategy, too, that again, could be presented, is that we have monies available, so when we're competing, we have a match that's ready to go at the table in the event that we're able to pull down more dollars, which I think is a smart way to go. I mean, I'm not critical of that in any way, so.
Well, I think, at the Library Authority, we have reserves, but like you said, over the next five years, we're looking at a downward trend that's going to eat into those reserves, and especially on the city side, which the library system as a whole is really important. So, well, it's good to have the conversation and look forward to, hoping that they, you know, there's so much money nowadays, but it would be great to have more money for our library system to come up to date on some of this stuff. And I want to thank you, Jeff, and to the county staff who have worked closely with the Library Authority to, because I know this was a separate master plan, but the Library Authority at the same time is updating a master plan, and we were, this will augment theirs, if I understand it correctly, and it's because the county was kind enough to work closely with them, I believe. And I want to thank you for that. The Library Authority really appreciated it, too.
Yeah, they're our partners. We've worked together for years now, and I think we'll continue to work together in the future. And Jared and I had conversations about more collaboration this morning, so I can't take the credit, my staff did it all, so.
Yeah, they did amazing. I heard about it on the Library Authority's side, so it was much appreciated by that, by the Library Authority. Did you have more comments, Supervisor Natoli?
Just, again, I would echo your comments about certainly our team, working with the library team, and certainly our consultants, again, folks who listen. I guess I just wanted to respond to Ann's point, that maybe we're looking, maybe what I would be looking at is how you implement a master plan. How do you get there? And again, it may be a combination of things. Again, it's not all going to be in one fell swoop, it'd be nice, but that, to me, would be very meaningful, because then it serves as guidance, budget guidance, but it also serves as guidance for strategies as we're looking at opportunities to, again, sometimes it's not all about the funding, it's working collaboratively, obviously, with libraries and certainly our staff, and trying to meet the needs out there, recognizing things are aging in place as it relates to the facilities in particular. So that would be, again, in response to what you asked.
I hate to belabor this, but I do want to ask, because the library used to be in the, is it the SIP, or is it the, which, it used to be in the five-year plan, either funded or non-funded. I remember Orangeville used to be in it, and then they took it out because it wasn't funded. So is this master plan going to be incorporated, then prioritized and incorporated into our, you know, those that are actual, an action plan? Is that the idea?
So there will be, it won't be coming through in the '21, '22 CIP. Some items are in there, but what we'll do when we do the next fiscal year's CIP, we'll go ahead and we'll add some of these items, whether we can fund them in the five-year plan, or they'll go on the unfunded list, along with a lot of the facility assessment deficiencies that we have as well. Those will be included in the plan as well, in the five-year capital improvement plan.
So in the workshop, if we visit, what are the ones that are in the worst shape that will be prioritized? It will be kind of nice for those supervisors, I think, to be able to share that with their communities, know it's coming.
Yeah.
Nothing ever comes fast enough, but, you know.
Yeah, the facility assessments are prioritized accordingly, based on fire, life, safety, and facility condition, critical to facilities and things like that. So it's pretty easy to pick things out. And then we also have the refreshes that are included in this, and those types of things that we can look at as well.
Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it. All right, so we need to vote on this. I believe I moved it.
I second it.
And Supervisor Natoli, second, and we have a roll call vote.
Supervisors Desmond, Frost.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Natoli.
Aye.
Serna.
Aye.
And that's a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Okay, so now I'm going to ask that we jump to item 50. And I also want to put on the record that there is a title correction. This is the Appointments from Your Own Ranks to the Community Review Commission Subcommittee. And so we are asking that you appoint two members from the Board of Supervisors for the subcommittee. Okay, we have Supervisor Desmond.
And so, thank you, Madam Chair, just so I'm clear, so this is the subcommittee to work on the bylaws?
Yes.
For the CRC, to present to the commission after it's impaneled. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And just so I'm clear, who else would participate? I mean, I think County Council and
And the OIG is automatically on this subcommittee.
Yes, so I'll just comment briefly on that. You're right, Madam Clerk, it will be County Council and the Inspector General. I, unless told otherwise, am taking the liberty of doing a draft of the bylaws for the subcommittee's review and comment and edit, just to get the process started.
Thank you. So I appreciate that. As, I'm a big fan of this idea and Supervisor Kennedy's leadership in it, and as someone who has a very large, unincorporated population that is affected by the Sheriff's Department, I, for one, would like to serve on this subcommittee, so I don't know if it's appropriate to nominate myself, but.
Well, I'll be inappropriate, because I'm good at that, obviously. So this is Kennedy. I would like to nominate Supervisor Desmond and Supervisor Kennedy.
Yeah, I was going to do the same, because in the conversations at the time we voted on it, you two had strong opinions about some of the structure of it, and so I think that's entirely appropriate. Do we need, and we have a second by, so we have a motion by Supervisor Kennedy to nominate Kennedy and Desmond, second by Desmond. Do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
Supervisors Desmond, Frost.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Natoli.
Aye.
Serna.
Aye.
Okay, and that's a unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Okay, your next item, 51, is the Appointments from Your Own Ranks to the Regional Water Authority. This is a one-year term, so we just need to do another one-year term.
Is that Supervisor Natoli at this time?
This one is Supervisor Kennedy, and I believe Carrie Schmidt is his alternate. And I think, did Carrie retire? Am I right?
No.
Carrie Schmidt?
No.
No? Oh, okay, I have the names wrong, sorry.
Supervisor Kennedy, did you wish to continue on that?
I really am interested in the subject matter and all of it, and I enjoy my time on there. There are many times I have conflicts due to things, well, and so would Supervisor Natoli, like Seta. So I will continue to soldier through, if that's the wish of the Board, but if somebody's interested, I do have frequent conflicts, it seems like. They meet at odd times.
Okay, are there any thoughts from any other Board members?
And frankly, Carrie does such a fantastic job, if you can't make it. If I can't make it, it's probably a good thing.
I'm happy to have Supervisor Kennedy continue.
Because others of us have conflicts. If it falls on a Thursday or whatever, we're going to have Secog or Seto, and I think Carrie is very capable of representing the county's interests in the event that Mr. Kennedy or any other supervisor wasn't able to make it. So I'm fine with it. I would just make the nominations here, Patrick would be the member, and Carrie Schmidt would be the alternate for the ensuing year.
Okay, and I have a second by Supervisor Desmond. Roll call vote.
Okay, Supervisors Desmond, Frost.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Natoli.
Aye.
And Serna.
Aye.
Okay, that's a unanimous vote. And now we're on to your nominations. Item 52, you are continuing to July 27, the Assessment Appeals Board, Children's Coalition, Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, Casumnes Area Community Planning Advisory Council, the County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Casumnes, County Service Area 4C, Delta, the In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, Local Child Care Planning and Development Council, Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, and the Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And for your matters today, we have the Antelope Community Planning Commission. Supervisor Frost.
Please nominate Julie Pirvezalahi. That was terrible, but I, and I apologize if I pronounced that wrong. And then continue the remainder to July 13.
Okay, and then Supervisor Natoli, we have the Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council.
I'd like to just hold that over to next Tuesday, please, June 15.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the Developmental Disabilities Planning Advisory Council.
Chiefs nominate Sharon Martin. Continue the remainder to July 27.
Disability Advisory Commission.
Chiefs nominate Kathy Satchin. Continue the remainder to July 27.
Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Desmond.
Please reappoint Leon Corkos and Theodore Walter, and continue the remainder to July 27.
Okay, and then we have Rayolinda Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please nominate Roy Hickey, and continue the remainder to July 13.
And this is our last one, Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. Supervisor Kennedy.
I guess I have one more interview, so please continue to June 15.
And then I also have a note here that we are going to be closing the application period. Is that correct, Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Clerk, yes.
Okay, and that concludes your nominations.
Thank you.
So then it would be County Executive Comments.
I just want to thank you, Chair Frost, for putting the Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness item on the Board agenda today. My mother suffers from Alzheimer's, and it is a debilitating disease, and it's very difficult on both the person who's afflicted with it and as well as the family. So it was nice to hear that on there today. So thank you.
Thank you. And I do not have any Board members with any adjournments. Do we have any comments from Board? No comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Serna here. I just want to kind of conclude the day where it began. I did send a brief note to our interim County Exec, as well as our Public Health Officer. I think it is incumbent upon I think it is incumbent upon our administrative leadership, working with public health, to figure out how we're going to avoid the uncomfortable ambiguity of the rules of the chamber when it comes to having in-person testimony. If, in fact, it is the rule that people are expected to wear a mask, then that ought to be enforced, and if we can't enforce it, then I think the rules need to be changed, or we need to do something different, but we cannot leave it to kind of an arbitrary guessing game as to which of any of the near-future meetings we're going to have chambers full of people without masks, or people willing to abide by what the rules are. And I double-checked, you know, our website today, again, about the notice of in-person testimony, and it is very clear, it says masks will be required. Well, obviously, that didn't happen today, so, you know, I don't want to micromanage this, but I think it just needs to be avoided in the future, and one way we deal with it, or can deal with it, is just either make clear what we're going to enforce, or avoid that altogether. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Serna. I think between now and our next meeting, maybe County Council can
Tomorrow morning.
Oh, it's tomorrow morning. I, well, you know, I, I think maybe there's some misunderstanding about the rules. I don't think we, I feel like I understand the rules, and I understand that it's incumbent upon us to make public comment available to even those with disabilities or health issues who cannot wear a mask, and it is also, so I, you know, there may be some, maybe County Council can clarify what is the rule.
I've had, I've had an offline discussion with the interim county executive regarding some of the legal issues surrounding the mask mandate. I agree with you that there is a legal right for people to make public comments, but it's not an unfettered right, and court cases have held that legislative bodies can impose reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions, of which a mask mandate is one, so I believe that we've explored some solutions to the issue that you and Supervisor Serna brought up right now, and hopefully we can implement those by tomorrow. Not sure if we will be able to or not, but your points are well-taken, and I'll be working with the county executive and her staff to figure out how to deal with tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, that sounds like a good plan. Thank you Supervisor Serna. Okay, with that, I believe we are done for the day.
Close session.
Pardon me?
Close session.
Oh, we, yes, we do have a closed session. Do we have a report back?
I do not believe we will have a final report out, because we won't be taking any final action, so you can go ahead and adjourn to closed session.
All right, this meeting is adjourned to closed session.